Good evening and welcome to the March 11, 2025 School Board Meeting in Manatee County, and also regular public hearing as well. Want to call this meeting officially to order. I'm going to send it over to Mr. Tatum for the reading of the vision and the invocation as well.
Reading of the district's vision, the school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And so if we can do the invocation, I'll do that this evening. My pastor was not able apparently to make it because of traffic. That seems to be a problem lately, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So if the county commissioners and the Florida Department of Transportation are listening, please help us out with that.
So we'll please stand.
And I'll pray for that too, silently.
And we'll have the pledge of allegiance, color guard after the invocation.
Dear Lord, as we gather together this evening, put your will into our heads and our hearts and our minds of everybody in this room so that we come together as a body and in a community of citizens and people who share friendship and fellowship to make the best decisions that we can for this county and for our community, Lord. Help us to see one another as human beings. Help us to see how we could be helpful to one another anytime we start to feel a little animosity or conflict for each other. So in your holy and precious name, we pray for a productive and peaceful meeting this evening. Amen.
All right, if you'll continue to stand as the color guard comes in from Manatee High School. They're escorted by Lieutenant Colonel Todd Crawford, members Asai Rodriguez, Brian Cross, Brian Bernaby, Anthony Mercado.
Others, oh, left, face, face and arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice.
Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, want to thank the Manatee High School JRC for the color guard tonight. Approval of the agenda, item number six. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under agenda amendments on the March 11, 2025 Agenda, updated March 7, 2025, posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. Look for a motion to approve. We've got one from Ms. Ray.
Second. Oops, I gotta join the meeting.
I'm in here, but it's not showing anything on here.
Yeah, I don't see it. Oh, there it goes. Now be second.
Okay.
All right, any thoughts on the agenda? We're good?
No boards?
Okay, perfect. Go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'm signed in, but I'm not getting anything. I can go back on then. Go ahead and put me in a firm.
And that passes five to zero. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the February 14, 2025 School Board Workshop.
Here we go. So moved.
Second.
She got a motion and a second. Any corrections? Anybody see any corrections to the minutes?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes of February 14, 2025 School Board Workshop. And that passes five to zero. Student celebrations is next.
And we're still waiting on the students.
Waiting on the students? Okay, we can, we can move to.
Come back, come back to it.
Come back to it.
Yeah.
You mean another meeting?
No, no, I'll just, I'll move on to public comment and.
And that'd be fine. I'm keeping it.
I'll move on to public comment. When they get here, you let me know. We'll come, we'll stop public comment, come back.
We have Don standing up, you know.
Yeah, with the, for the Boys and Girls Club. We're just waiting on the students.
Right.
Okay. All right, will you let me know when we got both?
I'll bring them in as soon as I get here.
Perfect, perfect.
Awesome.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine, which is public comment. And we do have some public comment this evening. Before bringing up everybody up, this is our first time. We've really had some public comment on some stuff. Just want to make sure everybody knows, obviously, our, our public comment process was on the, online when you filled out. Above us is a, is your timer, three minutes. It'll go green, yellow, red, I believe, when you, when the, the seconds get to where you need to stop at three minutes. And just FYI, it's board policy that we don't address questions during public comment or address anybody doing, during public comment. It's always been the policy. So just, if you ask a question and we don't respond, don't get upset. All right, so we'll bring up our first public comment. Celine Charleston. Followed by Ernest Marshall.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Celine Charleston. I'm a retired teacher with 19 years of experience in public education, 18 of those in New York and one here in Pinellas in Manatee County. My family and I moved here several years ago for the education system, believing in its commitment to student success. I have spoken before this board before about the transportation concerns, and I want to acknowledge the efforts made by the district, the superintendent, the transportation department, and the parent liaison. Their responsiveness and willingness to find solutions, including adding a new bus route to, a new bus to our route initially made a significant difference. My daughter was arriving at school on time, even early. Unfortunately, in the last few weeks, that progress has been completely undone. Due to the ongoing driver shortage, my drive, my daughter has arrived at school as late as 10:00 AM, 45 minutes after the first bell. More recently, she has been arriving between 9:35 and 9:45. As a former teacher, I know just how much instructional time is being lost. My daughter is in pre-AP course first period. Missing this much class time is not just an inconvenience, it's a serious academic disadvantage. And she is not alone. What about the students who are already struggling? Those who rely on this time to grasp fundamental concepts? How does this continued loss of instructional time impact their education? I reached out to the administrators at my child's school, who have been incredibly supportive. Tonight, I'd like to share with you the email I sent to them, because this is not just my family's issue, it's a district-wide problem affecting countless students. I'm asking the board to take immediate and effective action to ensure that the students who depend on bus transportation arrive at school on time every day. The efforts so far have been appreciative, but the current situation is not sustainable. Our students deserve better, and as always, I offer to be part of the solution. I'm more than willing to collaborate, support, or assist in any way that I can to help resolve this issue. Our students' education and future depend on it. This was the email that I sent to the school. I was in this morning and spoke to Mr. Nunez, as he suggested that I reach out to both of you as well. And I'm sure you're both aware that there have been some significant transportation issues for the last few years. Caitlin's bus is one that is notoriously late. I spoke at the school board meeting last year and presented the staggering statistics of how much instructional time was lost due to the arrival of late buses. I've been in communication with the superintendent, as well as several members of transportation department. I know it is nobody's fault, and I will say everybody's been very supportive in trying to find a solution. This year, a new route was added to our area of the district, and this resulted in Caitlin getting to school not only on time but early. While there have been a few bumps, things were running smoothly until this past week. Monday, the bus was over 40 minutes late picking up the students due to the fact that drivers were doing multiple runs. This resulted in Caitlin getting dropped off at school at 10:05. As you know, that resulted in students missing almost all of first period. We finally started getting calls again indicating the bus would be late, so I was able to plan accordingly. This morning, we got a call that the bus was going to be 45 minutes late. This is a concern, not only because the students will miss most of first period, but it's also a safety concern. I drop her off at a stop on busy, is that my time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ernest Marshall, followed by Sarah Taylor.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the school board, Chairman Cho, Dr. Weisong. My name is Dr. Steve Marshall. I'm the principal at Manatee School for the Arts. I'm a native of Manatee County. I graduated from Moody Elementary, Sugg Middle School, and Beishore High School. And there were a number of district teachers who influenced me to become an educator, some of whom still teach in the district today. I have great respect for all teachers. I'm a supporter of school choice, and also, as a taxpaying father of a student who attends a local public charter school, I am here to advocate for him and the other 12,000 public charter school students in Manatee County, which makes up 20% of the public school population. At MSA, our mission is simple, to serve families and provide quality arts and academic opportunities for all students, regardless of zip code, regardless of test scores. We have been doing this successfully for 27 years, serving a very diverse population of over 2,000 students from all corners of Manatee County and beyond. Through hard work and dedication, we have been an A and B school for all the years that the grading system has been in place. We also have one of the highest graduation rates in Manatee County, and we're proud of our history, we're proud of our, our diversity, and the hard work it takes to be a successful charter school. The stakes are actually higher for charter schools, and we have to do more with less money. The data shows that charter schools have consistently produced positive outcomes, which also helps district data. We are partners for the mutual benefit of serving all of our public school students. Public charter school students are no different than district school students. The charter successes are also the district successes. This is a fundamental belief that I believe that we all share. I have been to district meetings where it was said repeatedly that we're on the same team. I hear it all the time. We've partnered with you to help get the vote on the renewal of the half-cent sales tax, which brought in around $50 million, $53 million this year for Manatee County taxpayers. We received no funding when it was first passed from 2003 to 2017. Then you asked us to support the renewal. We did. We receive a small portion of that funding from 2018 to 2022, but in 2023 to 2024, the district chose to terminate these funds to the 15 charter schools who instruct over 12,000 students. I am respectfully asking the board to make this right. It's about basic fairness. The tax dollars should follow those 12,000 families.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah Taylor, followed by Stephen Zikafus.
Good evening, members of the school board, district leadership, and community members. My name is Sarah Taylor, and I'm a proud parent of a fifth grader, third grader, and kindergartner at Rowlett Academy. I stand before you tonight as both a concerned parent and an advocate for fairness and how our schools are funded. Over the past six years, my children have been in elementary school. The schools we were zoned for in East Manatee in District Five, which I believe is your district, Mr. Tatum. I, during that time, we have been rezoned and our assigned schools have remained severely overcrowded. This has placed enormous strain on students, teachers, and resources. Charter schools, while not the answer for everyone, have made a huge difference in our lives by providing a high-quality education in an environment where my children can thrive. As you know, our community voted to implement a half-cent sales tax to support all public schools. Families across Manatee, including those who send their children to charter schools, contribute to this tax with the understanding that their investment will benefit the education of the students, no exceptions. Yet, since 2023-2024 school year, the Manatee County School District has withheld funds from the charter schools. Let's be clear about what this means. Nearly 20% of all students in Manatee County attend a charter school, one in five students. In the case of District Five, this is over 2,000 students we are referring to. That's thousands of children who are being denied their fair share of the resources for facilities, technology, and essential safety improvements that this tax is meant to support. Meanwhile, our district as a whole continues to struggle with overcrowding. Charter schools play a critical role in alleviating the burden, offering families additional public school options that help distribute enrollment more evenly across the county. This isn't just a budgeting decision, it's a decision about equity. If all families contribute, then all schools should benefit. Charter schools are public schools. Our students are no less deserving than those in traditional district schools. They are our future leaders, artists, scientists, innovators, and they deserve the same level of investment in their education. I find it unacceptable that the over 12,300 students that attend charter schools will not benefit from these funds. We are not asking for special treatment. We are simply asking for the funds meant for all public schools, students to be allocated as intended to all public schools, including charters. This is not only about the fair thing to do, but the responsible thing to do for the future of education in Manatee County. I urge you to reconsider the decision and do what is right for thousands of families who have chosen public charter schools for their schools' children's education. We ask that you restore our rightful share of these funds, ensuring that the money follows the child in Manatee County, so all students have access to the resources that they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zikafus, Sarah Huenstein is next. I don't know if I said that right. Go ahead.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Weisong. My name is Steve Zikafus, and I've spent my entire career working with the children, teachers, and leaders of Manatee County schools, both in traditional, public schools, and charter schools, and now in charter schools. I come before you tonight with a simple reminder. Whether we work in traditional public schools or public charter schools, we are all one body, one district committed to serving the same children. In my years as teacher, leader, and also administrator, I knew the third grader I said goodbye to at Beshaw Elementary on Friday should be, would be greeted by caring teachers at team success on Monday. The eighth grader who started King Middle School after the holiday break just left Rowlett Academy before Christmas. And then lastly, and the students I sent off for summer at Dr. Mona J. Middle School, found their next home at Lakewood Ranch Prep, Parish Community High School, or Manatee School for the Arts. Families move, situations change, and parent choice evolves. So, but our responsibility to Manatee County students never does. No matter where they learn, they are all our students. In 2016, we renewed the half penny sales tax with the clear understanding that these funds will be shared fairly among all children. Families across the county held signs, called neighbors, and spread the message that our schools needed more resources for the future. Thanks to these efforts, the measure passed 59 to 41, reflecting our dedicated commitment as a group for these children. Yet now, in the 24-25 school year, despite what it says in the board, in the board budget, and despite the statutory guidance that these sales tax funds show, that they should follow the students, the 12,000 students are, remain excluded. These families make up more than 20% of the student population, yet they've been cut off from funding promised every time they pay for a meal, they buy a shirt, or even a car. That's why almost 1,100 members in our community have already signed a petition in support of fair funding, because they recognize that every child, regardless of where they attend school, should benefit just like any other student. What does it say about us if we see this wrong and fail to act? What does it say if we know that a part of our community is not being represented in the distribution of their sales tax dollars? We owe each child the same support and resources because we are not separate entities. We are one county, one district, one community of learners. I urge the Manatee County School Board to honor the 2016 commitment by ensuring the 24-25 funds are distributed fairly, transparently, and benefit of every student, whether in traditional public schools or public charter schools. This is our moral obligation as leaders and as educators. We respectfully request that the April 8th board meeting include a vote to proportionally share the half penny sales tax proceeds with charter schools, ensuring that the 20% of our community who pay these taxes have their contributions fairly represented. Remember, the money should always follow the child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Huenstein. Seeing, you know, Sarah. Chris Amayer. Carissa Mayer. Ash Nibro.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ash Nafi Nibro. I am a parent of a child attending a charter school. I stand before you today with a deep concern about fairness and transparency, and how educational resources are being distributed. As a community, we all want, wish for our kids the best. Right now, I believe there is an opportunity for every child, no matter what school they attend, deserves a fair share. To 2002, the voters approved half-ascend tax for education. This is also renewed 2016, but 2018, 2022, that promise was kept, but 23, 24, nothing. That means my child is basically not getting what he deserves. This raises a question, if decisions are made without transparency, if it erodes the trust I have in the system. The purpose of the vote was to ensure fair distribution of tax dollars belongs to all children, those children that go to charter school. My child goes to charter school. That's a decision I make, and my child should not be penalized for going to a charter school. This is not about money, it's about trust, fairness, and a child's future. And I'm confident you agree that every child, whether in district or charter school, should deserve the same resources. Without withholding funding, it just is not a budget issue. It's about fulfilling the law, honoring the voter's intent, and also protecting our children's education and future. Florida statutes require tax revenues to be shared with charter schools based on district enrollment. Withholding these funds undermines the promise. I trust you will address this issue, restore fairness to all children in Manatee County. Our children deserve equitable education, regardless of the school they attend. They deserve the same resources, opportunities, and a chance to succeed. Charter schools are part of this community. Our children should not be left behind. As a parent, I ask you work together to make these tax, tax dollars be available to all children in Manatee County. It is the honor of the voters that we promise and restore fairness, providing all schools with the resources for success. Thank you. I come here maybe once in a blue moon, but you guys are always here, and thank you for your time and dedication for being here all the time. But we need this to be right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Damon. Good evening.
Chairman, fellow board members, Superintendent. I just want to tell you that I'm retired. So what brought me out of retirement? Only one I know of you is Mr. Kennedy.
Good to see you.
But I started in the district a long, long time ago, and I was asked to develop a priority model for the second 15-year sales tax, because the first one was misspent. And so in order to do that, we had to go back to square one and say, how are we going to stop the spending of that money wrongfully? So I built a priority model. It was based on some criteria, and we looked at that and said, if you have a point system this high, you're first on the list. I don't care who you are, which school in the county you are. That's how it's going to happen. So it was very successful. We also built some other pieces into that, and we made some recommendations. One of those recommendations was to have an oversight committee, which I believe still stands today, if I'm not wrong. I don't know. But that was to audit those projects that were going on, those monies that were spent. And to speak tonight to the request of the charter schools, I believe, as you guys work together and work this out, I believe that that needs to happen across the board. So charters, you know, you need to be able to know that you're spending the money correctly if they give it to you. I would make that recommendation to this board. How that's done, if you need some help, I volunteer quite a bit, and I'd be glad to volunteer and help you guys out if that's the case. I'm not here to take sides. I am here to hear a mission that you had tonight, though, and it said, all students of Manatee County. Hold hands through these things. Make partnerships, make friendships. Life is short, okay? You will also retire one day, and I hope you do soon, and enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That concludes public comment. Can't really see, obviously the door closed, if we're ready for the student celebration. I want to say, do you want to clarify anything, Mr. Dyer? No, I mean, I don't think there's anything. I'll say, just, normally, normally don't respond to public comments, but I just want to clarify this, because I'm the chair and I feel compelled. I just want to make sure that there was some mention of like transparency. I was on the board with, when the vote happened. We were completely transparent about that process, going back, I think it was 2022 meeting. So I want to make sure that we didn't do this, we, so that was, that vote was a vote by the board to stop the grant process. I just want to make sure that that's not, we, it wasn't some undercover, under-the-night decision, and nobody was notified of that. So I want to make sure that, you know, that there's no doubt, it was a, it was a meeting, we had it, it, there was the same discussion and the same public commentators tonight were there. Now, this board wasn't here, right? I don't even think you were here, Charlie, but, I think you were just, or were you just on?
I had, I think I just left.
Okay. I think it was November, is that, oh, so maybe you two were here.
Brand new.
Because I think it was, you all were brand new. So I do want to make sure that that's number one. It was, it was definitely set in transparency. And I want to make sure that the public knows the law and what we, what we have to do by law. It's something that I would like for Mr. Dye just to, to opine on. And it's, and it's, to me, the decision is not necessarily what we think and what we shouldn't. We can discuss that another time. It's, I want to make sure we're doing what the law tells us to do.
Do you want me to make a quick summary?
Sure.
Okay. So, I mean, for the most part, I don't think we heard any false statements tonight. Wanted to clarify that the district is following the law as the law stands. We're not doing anything that's unlawful with the, with the, those funds, the, the sales tax funds. Just to summarize, you know, and if y'all wanted to do a workshop or sometime, we can get more into it. But 2016, there was a voter-approved referendum that's still in operation today. But 2016, there was a voter-approved referendum that's still in operation today, and it did not require sharing any of the sales tax with the charters, and the statute didn't either at that time. The statute does require that today. It got amended, and it's, but it's not retroactive. So if this gets renewed, when it finishes its term, which is 2033, you would have to include the charters based on the formula of the per-student formula, like with, just like with the millage. It's the same thing. In 2016, the district agreed to come up with a methodology to share some of the money with charters, which was referred to, it was a block grant type program that charters could apply for. And that was the district, this goes back to Diana Green's administration, that's how far back it goes, but, so the district, when they enacted that voluntary policy, because it wasn't required by the statute, it was stated then that if the, if the charters were ever to receive millage, the millage money, that the grant policy, that the grants would be terminated at that point. And that's when the grants, the charters got the millage, and the law got changed for the millage, and that's when the school district stopped the block grant program. So, that's where we stand today.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you all the public commentators, we appreciate it very much. And now we're going to move to student celebrations, Mr. Barber. Awesome, thankfully y'all finally got here.
Yay.
And you got the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, and I know we do a lot of partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, and so take it away.
That's right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Board Members and Dr. Weisong. As you said, it was a tough evening for traffic tonight, but they did, they did make it here, and one of the tremendous things about our community is the partnerships that the school district has with all kinds of organizations, and one of the strongest is obviously with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Manatee County. So I want to introduce, to introduce our special guest this evening, the President and CEO of the Boys and Girl Clubs of Manatee County, Dawn Stanhope.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and I have my sidekick with me, who I know you know very, very well, and we're really proud not only of Omar leading in the district, but also being a club alumni in our Alumni Hall of Fame, and now our current Board Chair. It took only how many years to become Board Chair, Omar? Until he finally said yes, and we're so excited to have him alongside with us. And, you know, really what it's all about is the youth and showing their special talents and being able to celebrate them. And so today, we have the pleasure of introducing to you our Junior Youth of the Year, who is Chandler D. Chandler attends Virgil Mills Elementary in the fifth grade, and first year at the Boys and Girls Club, he had demonstrated his strong commitment very early on in being helpful, positive, showing his talents, and aspiring to represent the community with pride. And as a safety patrol officer at his school, Chandler assists pre-kindergarten students, demonstrating bravery and quick thinking when he actually received the principal's award for rescuing a young student from oncoming traffic. So, I mean, you know, quick thinking there, young man. Thank you so much for helping. Chandler understands the importance of a positive attitude and has learned valuable strategies at the Boys and Girls Club for managing his emotions and respecting diverse backgrounds. He also is an accomplished athlete. He has excelled as starting point guard in basketball and was recently nominated for an ESPY Award in football for his leadership. And in short, Chandler embodies the values we cherish at the club. Please join me in congratulating him for being this year's Junior Youth of the Year. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about Taylor, our Youth of the Year, because she has such an amazing story that it's best for you to hear it from her personally. But before she shares that story, just want to let you know, it was a really tough judging this year for the Youth of the Year competition. I think every year, it is a challenge because they not only have to write essays, get recommendation letters, but they have to answer interview questions in front of people they don't know, and then publicly speak to people they don't know. And Taylor did such a phenomenal job, the judges this year, they had to really, you know, talk it through for over an hour, I understand, before they could come to a decision because it was just that amazing. And so let's welcome Taylor to share her story as our Boys and Girls Club representative for Youth of the Year in Manatee County.
Taylor, you are incompetent. Taylor, these choices will ruin your life. Taylor, must you always fight? Taylor, that's it, you're off to teen court. Good evening, it's an honor to be with you all. My name is Taylor Bryce. As I stand before you tonight, please understand that my journey has not been easy, and while I recognize that life is like a roller coaster that is filled with ups and downs, I quickly realized I was going nowhere fast. I made some pretty horrible choices early on that took me off course. Sadly, I decided to begin smoking marijuana as a result of peer pressure. Truthfully, I knew engaging in jerkers was not for me, but the influence of my peers shattered my sense of self. Anytime I felt taken for granted, fighting was my way to express my anger and my frustration. And to add to the chaos, in-school suspension was a daily norm. My life seemed out of control. Entering teen court, I felt very disheartened and hopeless as I knew this was my absolute last strike. I needed a change, and I needed it now. I was required to complete service hours, and I chose to complete them at the Boys and Girls Club. Walking into the club doors, I was full of shame and self-doubt. This was such an unpredictable turn in my life. Then I met Mr. John, the club director of the time. Our initial conversation was one of optimism and hope. For the first time, I felt empowered to change my circumstances, I became proactive about my personal development, and even began to ask myself tough questions like, how is this affecting the people I love the most, or do I truly want for myself and how I can becoming a better me? Shortly after completing community service, I was invited to become a member of the Palmetto Boys and Girls Club. Since then, I have been fully embraced by the staff there as I feel like they only truly see the best in me. For example, through my leadership role in Keystone, I've been able to build a great relationship with Ms. Kat. She has been a mentor and a source of unwavering support to me. She has taught me the importance of openness and vulnerability. She has created a safe and supportive space where I feel empowered to share my thoughts and emotions. This has helped me grow emotionally, enabling life challenges to face them with courage and confidence. The great poet Maya Angelou once said, "You may encounter many defeats, but you must not be defeated. In fact, it may be necessary to encounter the defeat so you can know who you are, what you can rise from, how can you still come out of it?" Now, allow me to reintroduce myself. My name is Taylor Bryce. I am a 3.8 GPA student at Palmetto High School. I am an award-winning junior cheer coach for the Palmetto Trojans. I am the president of Keystone Club. I am attending family to major in business administration, but more importantly, I am a loving daughter, sister, friend, and a proud member of the Palmetto Boys and Girls Club. Thank you all for coming.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
That just shows you what the mission, the vision, and the core values of the Boys and Girls Club. Club kid to Board Chair, that's what it's all about. You know, we're here for the students to meet the mission and the vision and the core values, and let's give her another round of applause. And it's not how you start, it's always how you finish. Again, thank you.
Thank you. I do want to mention that we have Jim Minnis, the principal from Mills Elementary here this evening, and we also have Katie Brown, the assistant principal at Palmetto. Okay. So we're going to get a photo of y'all if y'all.
Can I ask a real quick question before we do photo? And Dawn can be able to answer this. What's the next step? I mean, you know, it's the club here, and then.
Yes, thank you for asking that, Chairman Cho. So for our Junior Youth of the Year, they are all invited to join Take Stock in Children. So when they start sixth grade, they can be paired up with a mentor, and that of course leads to college scholarships when they graduate. And then for our Youth of the Year program, our winner has gotten a two-year Florida Prepaid Scholarship. Our runner-up has a one-year Florida Prepaid Scholarship. And now Taylor will go to the state competition the beginning of next month to vie for the state Youth of the Year competition, which will then lead to regionals and nationals. So a lot of great opportunities for speaking in public and sharing her story, and, you know, hopefully racking up a lot of dollars to spend on that college degree. So thanks for asking what's next. Appreciate that.
Picture.
If you could get the students in the middle and then.
Mike, the school admin. Yeah. Yeah, the school admin for sure. Yeah.
We don't mind.
Come on down. Anybody else want to come down and jump in?
Thank you.
Thank you for being so flexible.
Big job.
Absolutely.
Great job. Yeah, good luck. I got them.
Thank you.
That stuff makes me so happy. I know, just kind of fills your cup, you know?
It sure does.
No, you shouldn't try judging it. Oh, that's tough. I'll do it again now. I'll do it again.
Yeah, that's awesome. Still want to cry.
Yep.
The fact to follow. All right, so we move on to item number 10, reports and presentations, 2425 STEM programs showcase. Dr. Weisong, did you want to mention anything before jumping to Mr. Jensen?
Chair Cho, board members, Superintendent Weisong, thank you for having us this evening. Last, at the last board meeting, we got to celebrate a lot of the amazing career in technical education programs we have in our schools, and tonight, we're going to follow that up with a showcase of some of the amazing science and STEM programs we have in our schools and the opportunities that our students have, thanks to our wonderful teachers and community. So with me, I have our curriculum superstars, I really brought the powerhouse out. So I've got Allison Nichols, who is our Director of Elementary Curriculum. I have Tiffany Spradling, who's our Director of Secondary Curriculum. I have Lynn Johnston, who's our STEM Coordinator, and Amber Plotowski, who's our Secondary Science and Waz Ed Coordinator. And this group is going to just walk you through some of the amazing curriculum that we use in our schools for STEM, as well as the programs, competitions, and an upcoming opportunity for the community to engage in.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, good evening, Chair Cho, board members, Dr. Weisong. We are so excited to be here tonight to present some of the work that we've been doing in the area of STEM across the school year. So our presentation today is going to showcase that work with an emphasis on the science standards through the engineering and technology avenues, and then also with that supporting math instruction. So many of the unique programs that you will see throughout the presentation tonight were made possible by state appropriations that we've received as well as referendum dollars.
All right, good evening, and as we get into our presentation, you know, all of our strategies and all of our initiatives are framed within our strategic plans, so specifically Ready for Life Goal Eight, expanding acceleration opportunities for all middle and high school students, which begin in elementary, of course, and then Ready to Grow Seven, Goal Seven, which is promote our schools and district as remaining highly competitive and uniquely designed to produce top-notch graduates, great neighbors, and responsible citizens. I mean, as Ms. Nichols shared, you know, the name of the game here is really for the S, the science, right, for our science achievement. So tonight, you'll see a variety of programs, competitions, which are always very exciting, and then opportunities that we have for our students and teachers. Our big goal, of course, for these experiences is to ultimately increase student achievement in science. So we are lucky to have well-aligned, brand-new instructional materials, as you know, and approved for kindergarten through 12th grade in our core instructional blocks in elementary, middle, and high school. We also have supplemental programming using Penda Science and Waz Ed, which you'll learn more about from Ms. Plotowski in a few slides. And of course, each of these resources are chosen with our teachers and with our various staff members because of their rich, their ability to teach rich science and make sure that knowledge really sticks for our students. We are also able to provide really great professional development for our teachers so that these programs can be implemented with fidelity and so that they're, you know, having impact on our student achievement. So in addition to store, into our core science classes, of course, we have a lot of really great STEM initiatives and STEM programming opportunities that all of our elementary students get, and then our secondary students get through some elective programming and through clubs and stuff like that. So this is a great opportunity for me then to pass it to Ms. Lynn Johnston, who will get into some of the really fun stuff.
Thank you. So as Ms. Spradling said, I have the opportunity to serve as a STEM Coordinator, and I oversee mostly our elementary STEM classrooms. So our elementary STEM classrooms are in addition to our core science classes. Students in grades kindergarten through five attend regularly in their schedule to dedicated STEM labs in each of our elementary classrooms. This year, I was able to work with some of our STEM teachers to develop some new curriculum maps for our STEM teachers. In those maps, we specifically worked on aligning STEM lessons to science standards, trying to pull in science with the technology that we have available to us. I've also encouraged all of our STEM teachers to work closely with the science teachers in their school, collaborating together to find out what needs they have within their populations, and then being able to teach to those particular standards as needed. Within our curriculum maps, we've also provided the STEM teachers with some exemplar lessons. Those are ready-to-go ideas of how the teachers can incorporate science with the technology that they already had available to them. I've also worked on meeting with the STEM teachers to provide professional learning opportunities for them. These were throughout the school year, a chance for us to be able to discuss the curriculum maps, what's coming next, talk about what went well, celebrations within their classroom, or even struggles and how we could help each other and mentor one another through the next steps within the curriculum map. So next, I'd like to show you some of the technology that we've incorporated into our STEM curriculum maps. As you can see from some of these pictures, these are some of the things that our students get to have hands-on with regularly within their STEM classrooms. There's a 3D printer on there. Just this year, we were able to purchase a subscription to MySTEM Kits, which is an online subscription service that utilizes lesson plans with a 3D printer. So for example, teachers can print manipulatives for a science lesson on bird beaks, where they're literally printing bird beak models, and then the students can experiment with different shaped bird beaks and how those adaptations change what that bird eats because of what its beak can pick up. Another example would be that they can print angle models and do a scavenger hunt around the room of finding things that are different angle measures because the students have something in hand, all printed with the 3D printers they already had in their classrooms. Ozobots, Cublets, Lego, drones, these are all materials that our students have access to as well. They allow them to experiencing the engineering, experience the engineering design process, practice problem-solving skills, and even learn basic coding skills as young as kindergarten. Students use our Ozobots, for example, to travel through the water cycle or a food chain. they're literally printing bird beak models, and then the students can experiment with different-shaped bird beaks and how those adaptations change what that bird eats because of what its beak can pick up. Another example would be that they can print angle models and do a scavenger hunt around the room of finding things that are different angle measures, because the students have something in hand, all printed with the 3D printers they already had in their classrooms. Ozobots, Cublets, Lego, drones, these are all materials that our students have access to as well. They allow them to experiencing the engineering, experience the engineering design process, practice problem-solving skills, and even learn basic coding skills as young as kindergarten. Students use our Ozobots, for example, to travel through the water cycle or a food chain. They might use drones to practice flying through obstacles and open their eyes to potential career paths. Snap circuits are another neat tool that we can use to teach students about insulators, conductors, circuitry. And then, lastly, on those pictures, you see our straw rocket launchers, which are a lot of fun for teaching force and motion. They're great for nature of science standards and teaching about experimentation, building rockets to transport things, or just see which one can fly the farthest. Elementary students have the opportunity to participate in multiple STEM competitions throughout the school year. The first one that we had at the beginning of the school year was our Catapult Competition. This took place at Southeast High School on Saturday, October 5. At this competition, students were handed a mystery bag of materials, which they then needed to look at, design, and build a catapult, and they tested their catapult in two criteria, one's distance and the other's accuracy. So, this is a great bonding experience for students at the beginning of the year to meet their classmates, meet the other kids within their STEM club, things like that, and start learning all those teamwork skills. This year, I'm proud to say we had 123 teams compete from our schools. And, as you can see on the slide, a team from Seabreeze Elementary won the Accuracy Award, the Techniers from Seabreeze, and the Killer Whales from Harvey Elementary won the competition for distance.
Ms. Johnson, can I say something? I just wanted to commend you on that event. I was there in my picture there with my cool blue shirt. Oh, airport, sorry. But I was just really impressed with the enthusiasm and the amount of people that were there and the participation that you had, and I'm thinking you didn't get any overtime for the time that you spent there that day. But it was just a really good event, and I've seen you, you were at the science fair the other day, too, where you're not. So, this is not one of those employees that does the men contract and then goes home and takes care of her dog or whatever else she's, I've just seen her all over the place doing all this kind of thing. So, congratulations to you. I admire your extra motivation, going above and beyond. So, good on you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Another competition that we are actually piloting this year, trying it out for the first time, is the Rube Goldberg Machine Contest. Think Mousetrap, if you know that game. That's kind of like Rube Goldberg. The goal of a Rube Goldberg machine is to design something that is overly complicated, humorous, sometimes whimsical. It completes a simple task with an overly abundant number of steps, showing a variety of energy transfers. So, the students do learn a lot about science through building these machines, even though they also have a lot of fun with them. This year, students will be working to design a machine with everyday materials. That's the goal of a Rube Goldberg. We don't need to invest a lot of money into these machines. We use materials we have around us, and we make those work in different ways. You'll see students using everything from empty milk jugs to some of the motors and things they have available from some of their robotics kits and things like that. This year, we are going to be doing a virtual Rube Goldberg contest, so students are building within their school classrooms, and then they're going to be filming themselves. Their film will have two parts. The first part will be a presentation of their machine describing how their machine works, and then the second part will be the machine actually running. And this models after the actual Rube Goldberg competitions that are nationwide. Our hope next year would be to potentially expand that to middle school, if all goes well this year. Manatee County has developed a pretty strong robotics program over the past few years. Our students compete with VEX Robotics. This year's game is called Rapid Relay. You can see it in the picture there. The game starts with a ball, plush ball, being loaded into a loading mechanism, which randomizes which side of the field it falls to. The students need to use their robot to collect that ball. During a teamwork match, they need to pass the ball to their partner robot, and then the goal is to get it through that goal wall, activating those blue switches and scoring as many points as they can in one minute. So, they have one minute to drive their robot or autonomously program their robot as well. Our students learn so many things through our robotics program, not only math and science concepts, force and motion, measurement, angles, all of those things, but they are also documenting everything in an engineering design notebook. So, they're learning those skills of documentation like real engineers do. And then at competition, every team participates in an interview as well. So, our students are learning some great public speaking skills as they describe how they built their robot. During the competition, students also need to work with random partners that are generated that day, those teamwork alliances. So, they really learn how to communicate with one another, come up with strategies on the fly. This year, we hosted five, a total of five competitions for robotics. Four were elementary, and one was middle school. At our elementary competitions, we had 80 teams compete, and 13 of those schools that competed at those competitions were actually able to compete at more than one, because we offered four elementary competitions. We had 19 middle schools compete at our middle school competition as well. And before I move on, I just want to take a minute to thank some of the key players. I know that, like, a lot of the times, I was behind the microphone, so it was easy for people to notice me at the competitions, but none of those competitions would have been successful without the amazing team of STEM teachers I have behind me. And there were five teachers who helped plan all of those robotics competitions and gave up their weekends as well. So, I want to recognize Hannah Cuervo from Willis Elementary, Lisa Wood from Sammaset Elementary, Vic Kolomichenko from McNeil Elementary, Nick Le Duke from Harvey, and Tony Vasile from Hale Middle School. They were my event partners who helped me plan all of that. And I'd also like to thank the campuses that opened their doors to us and made our events so comfortable and successful this year. We had events at Southeast High School at Catapult, and then they allowed us back for VEX, lots of little people running around that big campus. And then, we had competitions at Hale Middle School and Palm Meadow High. So, I'd like to publicly thank all of those schools for allowing us to be there. And our VEX competition season is not quite over yet. We just participated in the state competition on March 1st and 2nd. We actually sent 27 teams to states this year, which was the most we've sent so far in the history of Manatee County schools. And I do think that's in large part because we hosted four elementary and one middle school events of our own, so we were able to get more bids to states this year. In, just in reference, in 2021, when we were first starting in robotics, we only sent six teams to states. This year, we sent 27. And those, of those teams, three of those teams actually qualified for the world championships for VEX Robotics. We have one team from McNeil Elementary, a team from Dr. Mona Jane, and a team from Hale Middle, who will all be traveling to Dallas, Texas, May 12th, 13th, and 14th, to compete in the largest robotics competition in the world, where they literally will get to partner with teams from around the world, sometimes through the use of a translator, to do all those skills that we talked about previously. So, those are some of the STEM side of the competitions that we've been able to host this year.
Can I just, I went to a couple of the VEX competitions, and those are so cool. I mean, just the, the way the kids can get things, and they're so fast. I mean, the kids are so fa, they're, you know, hand-eye coordination's much better when you're that young. But, and even the elementary kids, they were just like on it, and it was, it was a lot of fun to go and watch them compete. And when they were competing in teams with kids from other schools, including schools that are not in our district, were invited as well, and so they were competing with them as well, and to see them all, you know, just getting on well and competing and playing and having a great time, it was, it was so much fun.
We hear that a lot with VEX. Where was that when I was in school?
Yeah.
I'm just glad to hear Rube Goldberg is still around. Like, I haven't heard that name since I was a kid. I'm like, wow, Rube Goldberg's still going?
Oh, I love those, too.
Real quick, though, I, I see some of the people you mentioned, but I just want to give a shout-out to, and Mr. Tatum, he's in the picture with you, too, but my old friend Tom Burgos is in the, is in the back
Yep.
left of that picture. And so, I just want to give Tom a quick shout-out. I haven't, I haven't seen him, we used to be neighbors, and I have now, I haven't seen him in forever. So, Tom, if you're listening, shoot me a text, let's get together. Haven't seen him in forever. So, it's nice to see his smiling face, then. Thanks, Jen.
And I'll turn it over to Amber, Ms. Plotowski, for her part.
Thanks. So, I'm going to talk about mostly the secondary events, competitions, programs that we have going on in our schools. So, for anyone perhaps in the public that's not familiar with WAZ Ed, it was a program started by Apple co-founder Steve Wozniak. Mr. Wozniak, known as The Waz, is super passionate about getting kids tinkering and exploring and being curious about science and engineering and computer science and STEM in general. So, the company WAZ Ed has put together kits that are basically a unit in a box, and so they've got supplemental curriculum lesson plans and all the materials needed to do that. A lot of times, as science teachers, we run into the obstacles of having these great activities, but we don't have the stuff to make it happen. So, we have found in the past, teachers just spending so much money out of their pockets, now we're able to put those materials in their hands in the classrooms. So, this program was started in the 2021-2022 school year with a state appropriation, and that went into every fourth and fifth grade classroom in the county. Last year, we were able to expand that into eighth grade at every middle school. This year, we have piloted at four of our middle schools, sixth and seventh grade. So, at one of those schools, for example, which is Johnson K8, they now have WAZ Ed in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, we're really excited to see that continuum. Speaking with leadership at that school, I know that they're, they're very excited to see hands-on happening in all their classrooms, because we know that's how memories are made. Palmview K8, if you aren't aware, is our WAZ Ed, it was the first pathway school in the United States for WAZ Ed. This year, they have received the honor of being a school of distinction through the program, and that's nationwide, because they have been recognized as data-validated. They have gone through a double-blind study by a company that deemed their results statistically significant, particularly in the areas of perseverance, critical thinking, and learning interest. So, these are all skills that we want our young learners to have as they move forward, especially here in Florida. So, I just wanted to give a congratulations to the team at Palmview. We hope to continue to see the benefits of WAZ Ed and these hands-on experiences in all of our classrooms across the district, because we know that those hands-on experiences are what kids will remember when they look back at their education. So, I'm excited to speak about the Guy Harvey Program here in the district. We did, last year, receive a state appropriation to create a guy, or to create a marine science career pathway here in the district. So, that starts at Anna Maria Elementary, it moves to King Middle School, and it finishes at Manatee High School. All schools received in-person training this year from the Guy Harvey Foundation team, who we've partnered with, to create all of the lessons, the experiences, and the training to make sure that teachers have the capacity to teach marine science. For example, at an elementary school, sometimes teachers aren't as confident teaching science, and part of their training was not just teaching the lessons, but teaching the science behind the lessons, so that they felt confident with their students. And a lot of those students at Anna Maria, they know their marine science, so you got to stay one step ahead of them. I'm proud to announce that Anna Maria had a school-wide Shark Week last week on their campus, and in every single class, from PE, where they played sharks and minnows, all the way through art class, where they were designing murals, every classroom was involved in some sort of shark science activity. King Middle is once again hosting Shark Week Camp on their campus this year, so we're really excited to open that opportunity up to middle schoolers. Sharks are a very high-interest topic with kids, and we'd like to take the opportunity to talk about how important they are to our ecosystems and not how scary they may be.
Quick question.
Yes?
Ms. Plotowski, on this, we're on the right slide, are those virtual reality devices?
They are, yep.
And what, do you know what they're looking at?
In that one, they were actually on an underwater scuba dive, looking at sharks and finding tags on the sharks, because they were doing a shark tagging activity in the classroom.
Wow.
That was in their STEM room.
Did we buy this equipment with Millet STEM money by any chance, do you know?
That was through the appropriation.
Through the appropriation from the state?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And we have those at all three schools.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure. In addition, three of our schools have had teachers get excited about this program, and they have attended trainings outside of our district, and they have gotten conservation status at their schools. So, that's Manatee High School, Palm Meadow High School, and Lakewood Ranch High School. So, we're really excited to see the program expand across the district. At Manatee High School, which we haven't gotten to talk about yet, those upperclassmen are working with Moat Marines Aquaculture Park to raise their own tilapia in the classroom. So, aquaculture is a way of doing sustainable seafood farming. A lot of the seafood in, even in Florida, is imported from outside the United States. This is a very fast-growing career path here in Florida as sustainable fish farming expands here in our state. Through that partnership, next year, Moat has agreed to do a snook exchange with us. So, those students at Marine, at Manatee High School are going to be raising snook and then donating them back to Moat Marine, where they will be tagged and then reintroduced to the wild. So, it's a really highly regulated, wonderful program for our students to be a part of.
Wow, awesome.
The, I'm sorry, that picture, obviously that, one on the right is the classroom.
Yeah.
Where they're building these things. What's the one on the left?
That's Moat Marines Aquaculture Park.
Okay.
It's way out east, off of Fruitville.
Okay.
They have their Red Tide Research Facility there. They do a lot of, a lot of fish farm research as well.
Awesome, thanks.
So, yeah, our, that's Manatee High School kids getting to tour the facility.
I got you.
Awesome.
Recently, in the end of January, we had the Envirothon Regional Competition happen. It was hosted in Osprey, Florida, and it's, this is a national competition, so our students competed at the regional level. Students basically work in teams to answer scenario-based environmental science questions based on the topics for that year. Everything is timed, it's pretty intense. You can see there, the top picture, they're seated around picnic tables with all their heads together, and we're really excited to congratulate the Bodacious Bears from Manatee High School, coached by Mrs. Boonterika Ellsworth. This is, this team took first place in regionals. So, they are going to be headed to the state competition in April, with the hopes of heading to the national competition in May. So, we're really excited for that. Some of you were able to join us at the Manatee Regional Science and Engineering Fair. Thank you to MTC for hosting us on your beautiful campus. We had two teachers at Southeast High School that are our Science and Engineering Fair Directors. That's Brittany Devlin and Stephen Craig, and they orchestrated a big piece of this event. Secondary students were able to speak with expert judges about their projects. They talked about their methods, they talked about their findings, and even next potential research opportunities. We're excited to be sending 20 middle and high school students to the State Science and Engineering Fair right after spring break. At the last board meeting, you heard about Caitlin Cook from Southeast, who actually won a bid to the International Science Fair, which happens in May.
Wow, that's great.
We are also sending with her three winners at our regional level that are going to be going as student observers at that international fair, so that they can learn more about the process, their underclassmen, so that we can see them continue to grow as young scientists.
Real quick, another question. Was this the award ceremony that happened, it was like a third, couple Thursdays ago? Was that what this was?
Yes.
Yep.
And then the event was held
Saturday prior or something?
Previous year, yes.
Okay, great. And I think there were a number of scholarships handed out at that event, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
We have students going to, as you mentioned, not only national competitions, but international competitions and
Yep, and there were a lot of special awards, too, donated by some of our community partners.
Right, yeah. Okay, good. That was great, Ms. Plotowski.
Thanks.
Kudos to you, too. We have students going to, as you mentioned, not only national competitions, but international competitions and...
Yep, and there were a lot of special awards too, donated by some of our community partners.
Right, yeah. Okay, good. That was great, Ms. Plotowski. Just kudos to you too.
So we do have a couple of things we're looking forward to this summer. For teachers, we are bringing in the University of Florida. Some of their professors from a grant that they have called Equipped are going to be coming in and facilitating workshop here in Manatee County for middle school teachers. It is going to focus on best practices in science. Sometimes we all need a refresher or some rejuvenation when it comes to our work. And the workshop's actually going to help them take an existing lesson, break it down, integrate some technology that Lynn's program works with as well, and then reconstruct their lessons in preparation to teach it next school year. So we're, we're looking forward to that. And then back to the STEM fair idea, the same Mrs. Brittany Devlin has won one of only eight workshops in the United States through the Advancing STEM Research Teaching Organization. They're going to come in and conduct a workshop with a full curriculum that our teachers are going to walk away with on helping our young scientists conduct good research. The goal of that is to increase participation in our regional science and engineering fair with our students here in the district. And lastly, from me, we also have student experiences. Our students are always our first priority. So we wanted to make sure that, again, we're creating memories for them that tie back to the science that they're learning in school. So we're really excited to be partnering with Disney's Imagination Campus, where students are going to take a workshop on physics, specifically in relation to Disney's rides and attractions. And all of the students that are being invited are from our Title I middle schools. So we know that that's going to be a really valuable experience for those students, and we can't wait for them to make memories.
Cool, thank you.
So I know, because I saw some of your faces, that some of these things piqued your interest. So we are lucky for you, we are hosting a STEM showcase on Saturday, April 5th, where we're going to highlight and celebrate all of this great programming, the materials and experiences that are supported through the referendum and then those state appropriations. And it's also a way for us to showcase the hard work of our teachers and our students because they will be there as well to speak to all of these great things. So it will be at the Bradenton Area Convention Center. The schedule of events, you can see, and I also sent that calendar invite, hopefully you've received. But we are going to include the Math Superstars Competition as part of this. We're going to hit that M in STEM as well. So if you've been in the district, we've done this at the elementary level for a very long time. So this year, we decided to combine it with the showcase, and we're actually expanding to sixth graders this year. So that will start at nine o'clock. And then we're going to open the showcase for the Math Superstar families at 9:30. So while their, their children are taking their math tests as part of that competition, the families will get to engage with all of the hands-on activities that are going to be showcased that day. And then we will open the showcase to all families and to the community from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock on April 5th. And so our goal with this was to make it very interactive. So again, if anything piqued your interest, please come because you'll be able to touch and maybe use an Ozobot or drive one of the Vex robots, you know, who knows? So we really want to make it interactive. We, we want it to be an opportunity to allow families in the community to kind of have that, that little peek into what their, what their child is, is doing during the school day with our, with our STEM programs. So we're going to have some different live demonstrations, like the, we'll have the Vex field set up. So we'll have students and teams there demonstrating the robotics. We'll have the, some of the catapult showcased from that first competition. We're also going to have materials, mystery bags of materials so families can actually, if they want to sit down and try and build their own catapult, they can. They'll have the fields, or the accuracy and the distance fields, so they can test their catapults. We'll showcase some of the Rube Goldberg machines. Braden River Middle, they're, they have a STEM teacher who does a competitive drone club after school. So he's bringing his, his drones with his students, and we've got a drone cage we're going to set up so they can showcase their drones in the cage at the convention center. I know you asked about the VR headsets, the virtual reality. So we'll have those from King Middle that you saw in the picture. So families can kind of see what those are all about and what students, how we're using those to support instruction. And then from TSA, one of the, the really cool things that, that's going to be there, they're going to bring the Drax, they do drag, make Dragsters, and they have a Dragster track at the, at the middle and high school TSA clubs. So they're bringing the Dragster track, and we'll have students there with their Dragsters to showcase that piece. We're also going to have some of the winning projects from our regional science and engineering fair displayed. And the students there, some of the students there to hopefully explain their, their projects and their process that they went through. We also, the big thing too is we're really wanting to showcase the pathways, the career pathways. So from, you see on, you'll see it says for kindergarten through career. So if, for example, on the slide, you see Ozobots. How do the Ozobots that we use in the elementary STEM program, how, if you have an interest in those, how, what does that support in middle school? So if I go to middle school, what can I do in middle school with that? What can I do in high school and then beyond, right? What career might that lead me into? So at the top, we'll have a poster for every station that looks similar to this, that has that pathway at the top. And then we've made a connection for families for all of the letters in STEM. So how does Ozobot support science? How does it support technology, engineering, and math? So families then can see what that connection is for all of those different stations. I do want to end just by, as Mr. Tatum thanked Ms. Johnston, so I want to thank her because she has done an amazing work this year. And like you said, she definitely is not that, you know, just the minimum work. She is going above and beyond. She spent four of her own personal weekends running our Vex competition. She then had a fifth weekend with the science fair. She went to states with our Vex team. She's going to go to Worlds with the three teams that are going to Worlds. And then on top of all that, she is the point person organizing this really big, huge STEM showcase that we're going to have in April. I also want to thank the TSA, CTE Communications, Student Enrollment Pathway and Experiences Department, it's a very long department name, and also the rest of our curriculum team because they've really helped support Lynn, and we're all collaborating together to, to bring this event to life on April 5th. So hopefully we'll see all of you and the public there. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Awesome, thank you very much. I'll say, I think the STEM showcase is, is, I don't know if we've, if we've, I don't remember us ever doing that before. Is this the first time we're allowing publics to come in?
First annual STEM showcase.
Yeah, I mean, it's phenomenal, like, I, I think that because the public doesn't get to come into the classrooms and see this, whether they don't have kids or they're not teachers, of course, and the state doesn't allow people to, we'll talk about, that's a different story. But this is a great way for us to, to do that and showcase what these students are doing. I mean, we see them come in and, and you, the videos and the great things and all that kind of stuff. But I think for the public to come in, and I really do hope that we have not just parents and the kids, I really do hope there's like, there's people out there, and hopefully we, we get it out there on our social media and all that. I hope there's people that have no kids in the district that come here and see what they're learning and what they're doing. Because I think you'd be really surprised, I think they'd be really, really surprised. Did you have something else?
Okay, Dr. Weisong, would it be possible for someone on the panel here to just give us three examples of STEM things that are going on that came from the Milage money that we use? Would that be something we could do, would it be possible, do you think?
They're all right here.
Sure, we can do that.
Well, they're all right here, but like specific, because I looked, I looked at the virtual reality stuff, and that was obviously from a state appropriation. So just so the, the public does know that, you know, this, and a lot of these, from my understanding, a lot of these programs may not be able, we may not be able to have these programs, or we certainly couldn't provide the equipment to have these programs for robotics and things like that. So anyway, maybe just give us three examples.
Slide six, if you turn there, that, every, all of that listed there was, was supported with or bought with that, the referendum or Milage money. All of the Vex robotics, so the fields, the game elements each year are purchased through that STEM Milage and referendum. Up into secondary, I know that, so like the Garner Holtz, the animatronics that we have, I know it's SUG, and is that at Nolan as well? At Nolan? So all of that are purchases through, through that Milage money. And I could keep going on and on for a long time, so there's a lot of things.
But the, the point is, is that it, you know, that our constitution requirement says a high-quality school system, and I know none of us like to pay taxes, and I don't, when I see my tax bill, I go, ooh, that's a cruise I could take. But, but this makes it a high-quality school system, right? I mean, these are the, when we hear about children going to international STEM competitions, I just don't think it'd be possible if we didn't have this Milage money that was available to, to do that kind of stuff. So good on you again, and I just want the public to know that our money is being, at least this part of it, is being put to good use.
Yeah, and very appreciative of it.
Mr. Tatum, if I can add, the other expenditure that's significant, that wasn't a part of this presentation, but it kind of, it, 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 it brings it all together, is remember that the STEM Milage is funding elementary classroom teacher positions so that we have that STEM class on the wheel that all students K through five are accessing. That's what's getting kids interested in this at a young age. At an age where stereotypes and beliefs are not a factor in kids, right? Where, where they say, anybody can do this work. And that's what's feeding the interest in middle school for robotics, for science research. And so that's not always a, that's the people and the stuff in those elementary classrooms, right? That's providing that exposure. To me, that's the most important part of the STEM Milage because it's introducing it at that early age to, to boys, to girls, to all students.
Great, that's good to know too, thank you. That's all I have.
I just wanted to, yeah, I'm a, I'm a big nerd. I love all of this stuff. You know, it's, it's just amazing. And to see all the things that even from the littles can do. And of course, again, this didn't, they didn't have this stuff when I was a kid. And I sometimes wonder, I don't know about you two gentlemen, having also been in, in, you know, public school classrooms, if maybe I should have gone into science teaching instead of English. Because this stuff is so neat. But they didn't have opportunities as a girl. You know, it was, by the time I got to that sort of stuff, it was high school, and it was all boys in the classes. So I, as much as I love science, I didn't feel like it was a pathway for me. And to have it, as Dr. Weisong said, available at a very young age where you don't feel like, oh, I can't do that because I'm a girl, or I can't do this other thing because I'm a boy. I like that we have this available, you know, for, for young kids, and they can, and all explore it together. And, and it's really wonderful, I, just the programs you guys put on and, and all of your hard work. And watching the kids, that's my favorite part, is watching the kids engage. School visits, I don't know about the rest of you, but school visits are like my favorite thing from this job. And be able to go and see the kids using these techniques and interacting with them. And, and just the lightbulb moments are just the best thing in the world as a teacher. And, and through these programs, you produce those on a regular basis. And it's just, it's incredible to me, and I just want to thank you all for your work.
Teaching Pythagorean theorem would have been easier for me, the kids to really enjoy it, if I had that Rube Goldberg. The angles and, awesome stuff, thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it doesn't just happen, I mean, it's a lot of work from you all, from the teachers, staff, so really appreciate it.
Chairman, if I can just add, we, the, the Rube Goldberg is a new piece this year. And again, we're, we're learning as we go. The plan when we expand next year is to have the board members enter as a team.
Oh, yes.
Compete against our middle school.
I volunteer.
I've seen some of the Dude Perfect, the trick shots and setting all that stuff up.
We could totally do this, we could totally do this.
Chairman, in all seriousness, obviously, it takes incredible teachers to put all these things together. And board members, thank you for also recognizing the talent of the four women who are leading this initiative. I would put this curriculum team up against any in, in the country. And we are just at the very beginning of some of the vision work of this team and a couple of others related to science research. So we, when we talk about competing at the international level, we, we plan to double down there and to invest a lot more. And we'll be talking with the board about that when we go into the next round of strategic planning. So lots to look forward to, lots of good news now, but even more coming.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. All right, we'll jump to item number 11, consent items, before we take a quick recess. Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the March 11th, 2025 school board meeting.
So moved. A second.
Your motion is second, so let's go ahead and vote on the consent items before us. And those consent items pass five to zero. I think this is a good spot to take a recess. We'll come back at 7:05. We're in recess. All right, welcome back to the regular board meeting. I'm going to actually close us and put us into the public hearing so we can discuss and see if there's any public comments out there as we are considering to adopt and amend school board policies that we have previously workshopped. So anybody, public comment out there on any of our policies that we are working on, workshopped? When did we workshop that? Forget when?
Two weeks ago? Two weeks. It kind of blends together.
February something.
February 14th.
Seeing no public comments, I am going to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. And move to Dr. Weisong, item number 15.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of final adoption of the following school board policies. Bylaw 0143.01 and policies 2431.06, 4430.03, 7540.07, 8405, and 8710.
Thank you very much. So moved. Your second, motion is second. I know we spoke about these policies. Board, do we need any further discussion? Anybody need any further discussion on this group of policies? Yes, Ms. Ball?
We had talked about the sick leave policy and whether or not, you know, slightly more extended family could be included in that. And we had talked about that, you know, it shouldn't be a problem, but it wasn't included. So I wanted to ask the lawyers if you could elaborate a little bit for me.
The sick leave policy is part of Chapter 1012 and is specifically defined as being spouse, child, parent. And that's all, the legislature had intended for children-in-law to be included. They could have done so. And in fact, part of the chapter is broader when it comes to certain areas, but not this one. So based on, based on the statutory interpretation and construction of Florida law, I don't see any wiggle room for children-in-law to be included in a sick leave dedication policy.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other board members lit up, let's go ahead and vote on the approval to adopt and amend the school board policies that Dr. Weisong repeated. Those pass five to zero. Thank you, Board. 15.2, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval to advertise a notice of intent to amend school board policies and set a public hearing at the board meeting on April 29th, 2025. Policies included in this advertisement will be bylaw 0149.1.
The motion?
Second.
And a second. Dr. Weisong, you want to explain this one?
Yes, board members, this is the policy board bylaw that was discussed previously related to proclamations based on the board's discussion at the workshop back on February 14th. We've created draft language for your consideration. And just to summarize, it indicates that proclamations can be brought to the board if they are related to the state academic standards or a required instruction topic identified in Florida law. Those proclamations would be due 28 days in advance and then would be agended pursuant to current policy, which indicates that the superintendent sets the board agenda in consultation with the school board chair. And then we would structure that in such a way that those proclamations would be voted on before the formal proclaiming of the document. There is also the provision in the policy that establishes official school board member letterhead and makes that available to each board member with a copy of all correspondence written on school board member letterhead filed with the clerk for public record purposes. That's the policy as we've drafted it.
Thank you. Mr. Chen?
Dr. Weisong, did I hear you say that there will be, it will be structured when proclamations come up to be voted on by the, by the board?
Yes, we put it on the agenda for a vote.
Okay. And then will it just be you and the chairman's decision? Like if someone puts a proclamation forward, the two of you will decide which ones get put on the agenda and which ones don't, or how will that be decided?
Right, so we would just follow the current policy. So it'd come in 28 days, it'd have to come in 28 days in advance. That would give the staff time to review it, confirm whether there's a connection to standards, required instruction, and then give the chair and I time to meet, to review it. We would put it on the agenda. And then as opposed to just our current practice where Mr. Barber would just come up and introduce the topic, it would be set up, we would create the agenda order in such a way the board would be able to vote. And of course, included in that would be, if a majority of the board objected to it being on the agenda, it could be pulled completely off the agenda at the time of agenda approval. So that would be an option as well.
Okay. I was just concerned that the language didn't, the language in front of us here doesn't have any wording about there being a vote. But as long as there is going to be a vote, and that's kind of the way we're going to do it, I'm okay with that. Because otherwise, we'd have to change the language again. It would be a substantive change. We'd have to start another 30-day clock and all that. So I just want to make sure that a vote will be available. That's all. That's all I have.
Yeah, I would say, I think we kind of spoke about the, throwing it into like the consent agenda. And so if, as we go to our board briefings and we see the consent agenda, obviously, any of us board members can pull a consent item and put it to new business. So if we didn't want that proclamation, somebody didn't want to, you can pull it out and discuss and vote. But then if we, if there is no pulling of it, it's in the consent agenda, it passes like everything else. And then if we want to do, when we read the proclamation, etc., it can just be put in to the agenda based on whether it's approved or not. Ms. Brad, I think.
Right, you just basically answered my question. So during our briefing is when we would express support or not support for the proclamation that would be put on the agenda, right?
I know, I mean, it's, so yeah, so.
So during the briefing is when we would talk to the superintendent about, like, pulling something?
Yeah, if it was in, so.
So the same process with that as in the other item?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, that's what I learned.
And then once, if we pulled it, it'd be on the new business. And then we would, we wouldn't do any proclamation until we voted on to do that proclamation or not. At the meeting.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Mr., was that good?
Yeah.
Ms. Chen?
Thank you. I have a question about the, this letterhead policy, which is like this thing that just won't get settled, I guess. When we added this, I added that first sentence. And Superintendent Weisong, I'm curious where this second sentence came from. A copy of all correspondence sent by the school board member must be simultaneously filed and maintained by the board clerk. Where did that come from?
Came from our internal discussions to make sure that we're keeping track of all public records. So for example, any email that a board member or I or any staff member sends is automatically archived, right? As are other electronic communications. So a written communication would also need to be archived. That's, and that's essentially how the staff functions now. So for example, if I'm asked to send a letter of support for a grant application that a nonprofit is submitting, right, I write it. And then it is scanned by Ms. Damacolo and/or Mrs. Cox into the archive file so that if somebody makes a public records request and says, I want to see all the letters sent out by the superintendent during the month of January, that's easily pulled. So we felt like the same needs to be done here so that we've got that archived for public record purposes.
Okay, I get it. I don't know, it just doesn't sit right. But I get it. But I mean, we as board members are held to sunshine. We are responsible for preserving our own, our own records. I'm just not sure why we need the double step of going through the board clerk. I don't know, I'll just ask the board how they, if the board doesn't care, I don't care. I mean, I would strike the sentence because it's not what I asked for. But if the board's happy with it, I'm happy with it, too.
Before you ask something, before you ask, answer, answer that question, Mr. Tatum. Was late. Go ahead.
I was going to respond to that. Yeah, so, because the way it reads right now, it's not clear whether it's, does this mean that if I use my letterhead, then I have to copy the board clerk? Or does it mean every time I send anything, I have to copy the board clerk?
Yes, that.
Anytime I send anything, like I respond to every constituent or, well, some people are shaking.
No, if you do it on letterhead.
If I do it on a letterhead, I have to, but if I, but wouldn't that already be, like you said, everything's archived in an email, in an email file somewhere. It's available for public records requests. What's, what does the extra step of having or sending it to our board clerk accomplish as opposed to it just not being in the regular email archive?
I think this is physical paper. I think. I mean, I don't want to talk out of hand. I think this is like a physical letterhead paper that you're going to like give to somebody for like a letter recommendation or, I think. I don't know what your intention is.
I'll address it.
Yeah.
If you're ready for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think I've ever used a physical copy of a letterhead. It's always been, or a document scanned to a PDF, sent to the student who needs the recommendation letter, which is my responsibility, because that's school district business. So it's my responsibility to save that in case of a public records request. It just seems redundant to me. And it's, and like I said, it's not something I asked for. It feels a little big brother, big brother-ish, frankly. It feels a little big brother, big brother-ish frankly, like the district would like to know what the board members are sending out on letterhead, which I think we're all professionals here, and letterhead to me means the person who signed the letter is responsible for the content of what's on the letterhead, not the board members and the superintendent or the district as a whole. But like I said, if the board is comfortable with it, I'll be comfortable with it too.
Ms. Beck?
If, uh, if you, if you take the letterhead and you scan it and you send it by email using the school board, the school district email system, then it is being captured.
Right.
Which is what I think-
Which is, I can't, I can't think of a situation where I have not used letterhead. Even my previous time on the board, and it was not sent through our district email system.
I think the language is talking about if you mail it, if it doesn't go in the syst, you know, the school district's system. If you drop it in the mail, now it's a, now it's outside the, the system.
And that's, that's a, I mean, to me, this is a copy of all correspondence, which means even if I email it, I still have to get a copy to the board clerk, the way this reads.
Yeah, and that's, that's overkill really, in my opinion.
I agree.
Because it's being captured in the, in the district's email system. So really, it's, it makes the most sense when it's being hand-delivered or, or mailed in the regular mail because there's a, there is an obligation, it's a public record, and, and it's really easier for in the future, if somebody makes a public record request, that it got put in the, it's not in your own archives, it's in the school district's archives, so.
Yeah.
So that's-
How about if we just added the word paper? A copy of all paper correspondence, would that, would that clarify the?
Or, or say if it's, if it's delivered via the district's official email system, it, it doesn't, it's exempted, or it doesn't have to also be?
Oh, sorry, just along those lines, I just, a different way to attack it. A copy of any correspondence sent outside the district's archival system sent by a school board member must, must be filed and maintained by the board clerk.
That makes more sense.
Copy of all correspondence sent by a school board member outside of the district's electronic archival? Is that, I'm just trying to get it right. This must be-
Mr. Chair, if I might just add here, it might be easier to just say at the end of the sentence, unless otherwise archived and maintained in the ordinary course of the board's business.
That's perfect.
Attorney language, good job. Her, so moved.
Attorney language.
What he said.
Yeah, good, okay. It's funny how you take, look at something and take too many things like I literally thought like physical letterhead, so anyway. But I, I'm, I'm okay with this, I'm, I'm good with all of it. Yeah, okay, so it, so my question is, um, to attorneys, we're, we're voting to approve, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Felton.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I've been being patient.
I have you here, I'm sorry.
I'm on.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, she's on.
So I was actually wanting to say also that we clarify as to paper correspondence. I also thought it meant paper, and I wanted to ask the superintendent if that was his intention, if he was referring, so that we have, you know, what he thought. Were you referring to paper correspondence?
Yes, that's correct. And, and I agree that it's a necessary duplication if it's going out by email, then it's archived. It would come up in a search if there was a public records request.
So chat, if I could, maybe a clean way to do this, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to include the language provided by the general counsel.
So moved?
Oh, is it a second or?
Second?
Oh, is it a second or so?
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
I do have a comment to make there.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
No, you're good.
So when we stick this, this language in, somebody could interpret this to mean, like for instance, I keep all of my school-related cour, I just have one phone, right, so I have my phone, and I, and I don't erase anything off of it that has to do with the school board, and it's all there, and I've gotten some records requests that say, you know, show, did you send any school board emails related to this topic between this day and this time, right? So someone could interpret this and say, well now, every time you send anything related as a school board text message, you have to courtesy copy it to clerk. So I just want to make sure that that's-
I would say my thing would be if it, if this is only with letterhead, right?
Just want to make sure it's clarified in this.
Yeah.
So the way that we see this most frequently, Mr. Chair, is through the use of texts and emails on your, your business phones. We'll get requests for public records for all texts, that sort of thing. This is maintained, our, our technology department has access to this. So if there is a public record created of a board's business on a phone through the electronic archive, we maintain that. All that this would do is if it's not something that's being sent by email or through your, your business phone, it would just be recorded and archived by the board clerk.
But, but my point is, is I don't have a business phone, I just have my phone, and so-
That creates another problem when we come to public records, because then somebody's duty to have to go through and check to make sure that your, your, your dinner reservation that's on your personal phone is not something responsive to the public records request, but the, the correspondence that you sent to a constituent about an issue coming before the board would be a board record, right? So somebody has to go through it and separate all that out, and it becomes very time-consuming and expensive. Highly recommend keeping board business on board devices.
So it's not, it's not sufficient then to, when a request is made, because this is how it's been done in the past, a request has been made to me to, to say, do you have any records about this topic between these days and these times, or something like that? That's, is that, is that sufficient or not sufficient?
It is until it isn't.
It is until it isn't.
What we see most frequently in this area of litigation is you, we trust you as a board member to go through and turn over all responsive records.
Right.
But then whoever is asking for it doesn't. And a court might then say, well, we're going to have to do that in, in camera, or you're going to have to do that in a more costly means by turning over the phone and having IT go through it. It's just a nightmare. If we can avoid, that's the whole point of Florida's public record laws, that we maintain these in a systemic archival manner so that the public, when they're requesting public records, can come in and, and get those in a cost-effective manner and doesn't require redaction and, and all those sorts of things. But if, if you, and, and I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, just if you're keeping it on your personal phone, there is that, that added layer of, of maintenance that we have to go through if a public records request is made.
I understand, if I choose to, to just keep it on one phone though, do I just, every time I send a text related to school board stuff, do I have to send it to the board clerk recording? Is that what this language is saying, or are we only looking at this as far as paper, letterhead type stuff?
Unless, my, my language that I suggest would be unless otherwise maintained. So if it's not being kept on a phone, then it would have to be shared with the, the board clerk for recording.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Dodge, you have something?
I was just going to clarify that on your own device, if you're still using the, the district email.
Right.
It's, it's, you don't have to double up, it's still being recorded.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the text messages, that's essentially what. Okay, I understand, thank you.
Thanks. Did you happen to get the language to be able to put it up on there? We can just do it manually. We'll just do it manually. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the amended verbiage.
It was me and Mrs. Felton. Oh, I thought, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I don't, I thought.
I think we both said it.
Arm reference.
Don't care, don't care.
Ms. Elder, fine. And so any other discussion on that, the amended, the amendment we want to add? Okay, so we're just, we're going to vote physically for the amendment. So all those in favor, just raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, it carries five zero. So now we've amended that, um, policy, and now we need another motion correct to- Oh, that's right, we already motioned this one. Yep.
We already motioned.
Any other discussion? And this one, we're good on Granicus?
Yeah.
Charlie, you're lit up, did you have something or no?
I thought it was the move.
No, that was it, no, he took it off.
Okay.
No, I got it done, thanks.
I think this was the first.
On the original.
All right.
Yeah, the original.
So let's go ahead and vote. And it passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Item fifteen point three, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the budget amendments for January 2025.
I'll move.
Second. Motion and second, thank you all very much. Ms. Elder?
Hi, yes, for the month of January, there were 630 budget amendments. That's over 2,100 chart strings that, that were affected. Four chart strings were over a million, they were all in the capital fund. Two were related to transferring budget for debt payments from the COPS Series 2023 Fund back over to the local capital improvement fund. This was due to a completed instruction project. And then the other two amendments were related to moving reserve in the local capital improvement budget to charter school cost centers. That's it.
Thank you. I know this was covered in the, in the briefing board, any comments on the budget amendments? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendments for January 2025. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Item number sixteen, new business, no superintendent recommendation. Item number one, approval of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee annual report for fiscal year ending 2024. We had that workshop done last time we met, don't remember the date.
Twenty eight. Twenty eight.
And the twenty eighth, February twenty eighth?
Yep.
We had that workshop done, they presented their annual report for us to approve, obviously this evening. So Ms. Spratt, I know you're the, the liaison, if you have anything to say before we move to motion and second?
No, I'll just motion to approve.
Awesome, all right, second. So a motion, we have a second. Only thing, I just want to make sure we clarify in the report, as we approve this, is, you know, there was some discussion on the last page, was the recommendations, and I just want to make sure that, that, you know, us as a board, we had a lot of discussion during some of those recommendations. And so I just want to make sure that from a, from a, well, at least from my standpoint, those are recommendations obviously from the committee that are made to us to say, hey, this is some things we need to look at. And I just want to make sure that we're not necessarily approving all of those recommendations, but I do think that we're, need to discuss with, with the superintendent. Hey, what are, what were some of those recommendations? What, you know, to kind of do checks and balance and make sure we're doing it right. If that makes sense. I mean, Dr. Weisong, looking at you, that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, Chairman, thank you. And, you know, in a, in a traditional audit, where there is a finding or a note or a recommendation, you, you would have the potential of having a management response, right? And in some cases, you indicate, yes, we agree with that, and we are putting an action plan in place. And in other cases, management might say, we're not in agreement with that recommendation, and here's why. That's not been a traditional part of this process. There are certainly recommendations that we'll take back and talk about. There are others that we believe are not accurate. And so again, if it had been a formal audit, we would have written a management response to some of those recommendations. So, thank you.
And I, by any means, wasn't asking for like, from your, like, from a true manager response, because I do believe it, I agree with you. There's some that are probably right, some that are probably wrong. But I do believe we should be looking at, at, at all of them and saying, hey, is this something, you know, that we need to, to check and, and make sure? Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. Yeah, the audit committee is meeting tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, and I can, for any audit committee members who did not hear that discussion, I can kind of bring them up to speed, refer them back to that meeting for their consideration. So they're, you know, they're up to date on everything that we're up to date on. And then to the superintendent's point, we can move forward, if the board decides to do it this way, we can move forward with a more formal audit, which would provide for management response and, and everything the superintendent just spoke about.
Okay.
And the joint, maybe a joint session, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep, yep, yeah. If they're not up to speed, I'll bring them up to speed tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sure.
I was just going to bring up, you, you said that we should look into these, but is that the process then that we're going to use to look into? Like, I would like to know, for instance, are there private lessons being paid by the millage? I want to know, I mean, if it is, then let's, then you stop. If it's not, then I would just like responses to all these things so the public knows and so that I, so that I know. So if somebody comes up to me and says, hey, I heard you're, you're using private, or using millage money to pay for private lessons, I can say definitively, no, we've looked into it, and it's not happening. So how, how can we go about, you said we should do that, but like what is the process?
Board, I mean, I, I would just say definitely communication with the superintendent. Because I mean, I don't know if we need to have a full, I mean, it's up to you all, we have a full presentation and go through a list of those things and say, yes, no, yes, they're happening, no, they're not. Or just communication with the superintendent to make sure they're not, but I don't know what your thought.
As long as I can answer them, like it says, use more state contracted providers for supplies to be collectively just a response. It says, well, sometimes we use them because the state is cheaper, but sometimes it takes three weeks for the state to get us our materials. So, you know, sometimes we use Amazon or whatever's quickest because that's, we got to get it. And, you know, numbers, and the private lessons, like yes, yes or no, we are, either we are, we not, we are or not using millage money for private lessons. Make sure the teachers are not using their bargain planning period to provide instructional private lessons. It's happening, or, I mean, I'd be happy with just a response from the superintendent.
Yeah, agreed.
And, and on all of them really, or at least ones that require, appear to be like a yes or no type of, some of them are, yes, this is happening, no, it's not. And that's all I'd like to know, so I can answer the public and feel confident that I know that our money is being used appropriately.
Perfect.
That's all I'd like, thanks.
Sounds good.
And maybe we could go to all of us if you're interested.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think I should have said it all there, yeah, okay.
I, I thought during the presentation that there was discussion about workshopping those recommendations when we start the new year of funds. But I don't-
I don't remember that?
I think, I think I remember that as well.
Yeah.
Okay. When, when, when did you want to do it?
I didn't say when, it was talked about during the presentation, that maybe there would be a workshop on some of the recommendations. Not necessarily deep dive into the specifics of, of whatever they found financially, but-
Okay.
Just to workshop it, to say, okay, if this is being done, it shouldn't be done, kind of-
Sure.
-mentality.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't remember that, but I'm not saying that we didn't say it. So my question would be, when? Like if, if we're wanting to do a workshop, like is that something to do before the next budget cycle, the next school year? Do you, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if I necessarily, to be honest, would need a workshop. And I don't know if I said that or not, I don't remember, but Dr. Weisong?
I was just going to say, if the board does want to workshop, we can provide those responses as part of the budget cycle presentation, because of course, the next millage budget will look different given that additional uses were added. And so I think we're looking at a late April or May timeframe for that. And so we could certainly provide responses to those recommendations and then kind of roll out the staff's recommendation related to the next framework for the millage, if that would work for the board.
I think that would work.
That'd be sufficient for me.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Good, yeah, okay. Were you still lit up or no? You just didn't click off?
I don't think so.
Nope, not you.
No, I'm good, I just forgot.
All right, so no other board members lit to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee annual report fiscal year ending 2024. That passes five to zero. Item number two, sixteen point two, approval of travel expenses associated with the FSBA Finance 2.0 event, April 23rd to the 25th at- at University of Florida Conference Center, Gainesville, Florida, dock two C thirty-five hundred. That's your, you, you all who went first time are going again.
Two point O.
So just needed a, yep.
So moved, sorry.
And a second.
I'll second.
And Ms. Felton, you were lit up to speak?
Yes, it's not really a specific time to talk about it, but while I'm there, I just wanted to let the board know that I have some appointments set up with some of our legislators to talk about VPK and going a full day on that. So I just wanted to make sure at some point I got around to telling all of you while we're all gathered together in public that I have some appointments to do that. And since this is that trip, I thought I'd throw it in here.
This is actually
This is, this is the finance trip.
Yep, but it'll be, but it's while I'm there for the finance, I will also be doing that.
Oh, gotcha. Awesome. Cool. So double, I got you. Not necessarily Tallahassee you're talking about, you're talking about.
While, while I'm up north.
Yeah, perfect.
Up north.
Awesome.
So, but that's in Gainesville though, right?
Yeah.
But no, I'm, so, when we're in Tallahassee, but yeah, for the school, for the training that's coming next week.
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanted to throw that in there now for next week.
I'll, I'll throw it, I mean, has nothing to do with this topic, but I'll throw this in. I had a conversation with Representative McFarland, who's on one of the committees, Education Committee, about several things that, especially our, on our legislative priorities, that being one of them, the VPK being one of them. And so we, we had a really good discussion. She was driving up Tallahassee. So I could have bored her for four and a half hours, five hours. I respected probably her to get other calls or listen to some tunes. So, yeah, but I've had that same conversation. So I think it's needed. I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but.
Yeah, I have a meeting set up with Representative Owen and we're working on a couple others.
Perfect. All right. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the travel expenses associated with FSBA Finance two point O. That passes five to zero. Item number three, sixteen point three. So I put this on here, the discussion regarding a letter of opinion or any kind of action if the board wants to support that. And specifically, the item is the school zone cameras and the three of us were on the board when they first did this last year. And, and, and the county commission came to us and asked our opinion, et cetera, and moved that forward. Putting those, the, the speed cameras, the cameras on the side. And I think that took into actions at the beginning of fall, right, this year? The Port County Commissions, I think it was last week, said to, to suspend and, and potentially stop the school, the school zone cameras district wide. Now, the city of Bradenton has not stopped them. So those are still rolling and recording. I, I, so I want to get, I want to gather your opinions on this. I'll give you mine first since I put it on here and just to let you know. I, I'm, I'm in support of having these cameras on during school zone hours. Should they be on at ten o'clock at night on a Sunday? I don't know about that. I don't, I, well, I do, I do know that I would not, I do not agree with that. I do believe, though, that, and, and Commissioner Saidi said this, there's obviously a problem when there's fifty-five thousand of these put out there. And I do not believe the solution is to pull off the things that found the problem. So hopefully, because they're there, we never have any speeders, right? It's just like when you're on Waze or your, your Apple phone and it says, speed trap, ahead. And what do you do? Like, you typically slow down, right? So my kind of Mac. And so, so, so I, I, I know for me personally, I think there was some confusion on when they were going to be on and when they weren't. So I know for me personally, when I drove through a school zone, like I just slowed down, right? And like, um, sometimes people behind you are like, what are you doing? You can see them. But the five seconds extra that it took for me to slow down and then go again, to me, was worth not having a hundred dollar ticket, number one. Or number two, putting your kid's life in jeopardy, right? But I, so I, I would say for me, in my opinion, would be for us as a board to be able to say, look, we support these during the usage that they're supposed to be on. So during school zone, school times, right? Now, you know, I'm not, I don't, I don't think we need to get into the, to the crazy specifics of like, hey, we've got a, a football game, a soccer game, and there's kids around. Do we turn it on at seven o'clock on Thursday because there's this? I don't think we need to get all into that. Although the reality is, we have campuses that are on roads, especially high school campuses, that you're going to get out of the games and extracurricular activity and still be on a main road walking, still be in a, in a school zone. So I think just having the knowledge of school zones, et cetera, hopefully will, will, will help in people slowing down. So that's my opinion is to, to form some kind of letter from us as the board to give to the, the county commissioners just to say, hey, we're, we're in support of these cameras used at X, Y, Z times. If, if that's something that, that you guys, or you guys can tell me to kick rocks, then that's fine. So Ms. Felton?
I have fully support having a letter. It, when they said that they were turning them off, the cameras off during school zone times, I was kind of flabbergasted. Because I feel like we're catering to people who are breaking the law and, you know, we're not going to punish them. You broke the law, but we're not going to punish you because you complained. That's not really the way the law should work. So I am fully in support of having them on just during school zone times, not twenty-four seven. I agree that's a little excessive if you're going somewhere on a Sunday to have the, you know, school zone times still in effect or the, pardon me, cameras still in effect. And I agree about, you know, not worrying about specific, you know, if there's events after school or anything like that. So we were discussing it, and as you know, my husband's in law enforcement, we were discussing it at home and, and, you know, and I have two younger drivers in my household as well. And, you know, their dad would kill them if they got caught reading through a school zone if I didn't get to them first. And I, I feel like not having that in effect, we're, if we at least don't say something about it, we're not protecting our kids. And, and we, as the board, are here for our kids. And that's our job is to make sure our kids are safe even before they get on campus. And to, to put out a letter would, would absolutely, I think, fall within our purview.
And I forgot to mention too, and I'll take this a little bit further. I think that, because there is some discussion, it's a money grab, it's a money grab. And I would say for us, I, I don't know exactly, maybe the council will know or Dr. Weisong will know, like, I don't know exactly if we ever received anything or even what we were. I know it's very miniscule percentage of what we were. I would be so even willing to say, from a board standpoint, like, send that money to the Manta Education Foundation, right? Like, so we're not even, we're not even involved in this. Give it to the Education Foundation. Have it be, have it be a donation. That ten bucks, what was it, ten percent out of the hundred? I don't know what it was. I don't know, whatever the percentage is, the Education Foundation can kick up, kick up income tax, your IRS paperback saying, thanks for donating to the foundation. And so, so maybe that hundred dollar ticket, I'm kidding on that. But, but I think that, you know, I don't even know if we received anything from these. You can clarify that.
Sure. I, I believe we received two distributions from the county. We have that money in a separate project, and I believe Ms. Sellers may be able to verify. But I believe we've allocated that to contribute toward our contribution towards school crossing guards. The statute does have specific uses and I think as a leadership team, we felt like that was an appropriate use of those.
That's perfect. Yeah. I just want to make sure. So it's not like, oh, you guys are just doing this to get this money to whatever. Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Ms. Spray?
I didn't know this was on their agenda, first of all. I don't know from any other board member. Did any county commission reach out to you? They didn't, nobody reached out to me about this.
Oh, you mean when it was on the county commission?
Right. And or did they reach out to anybody in the district?
No.
Not to my knowledge.
I can verify they did not reach out to the sheriff. I had a conversation with him.
Right. So you said that when this was initially brought, and I remember this, they were the one that was going to take care of it. We weren't going to have to manage any of that. And, and you're saying fifty-five thousand, which I, I saw the number two. Apparently, there's a problem. And this all started, if people don't know, was when the state pulled the safety zones off of their highways, meaning sixty-four, three oh one, and seventy, and wherever else the state highway was. That's how all this started. And the county was gracious enough to say, we're not going to let that happen to our county. We're going to have, and the sheriff was highly involved in implementing these cameras for our school zones, if I remember right. I know I talked to him about it and he's like, yeah, we got to have something in place. So I was grateful that the county stepped up to do this and let us, all of us be in the loop when they were going to implement this. But I know people have reached out to me talking, saying that they got a ticket from, I'll give you a good example. Why did they change the speed limit at Bay Shore? I've lived here thirty years and I've always gone forty. And my head went, whoa, you've been going forty through that zone? I was real alarmed by that. So I said, well, I would say a forty is the norm for a school zone. That's too fast. But I think a letter would be a good thing for us to do to the county, because I do believe, but I don't necessarily want to be coming home from an event and slowing down because the lights blinking. I mean, at seven o'clock Saturday evening.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know who was managing the timers on that, but to me, it could be, the cameras could run all the time. The blinking lights, I mean, because the cameras are capturing when people go through and they have timestamps and date stamps on them. So if you're driving by, it's got a time clock and it's got, okay, you drove through on Wednesday, seven fifteen or seven thirty in the morning. And the lights were blinking at that point. Now, the time, the lights could have the timer, but the camera would be running all the time, although somebody would say, oh, no, now you're recording me all the time. I, I'm guessing that's what I would hear, but it would be, why bother having two different timers?
Yeah.
Right. That would be my thing. It's like, you just need the lights to have the timer, not the camera. And I don't know the company that did that or managed that. Surely, we have technology that could do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they were just, they were giving tickets regardless of whether that
Light was blinking or not. It was a timestamp.
Yeah, so.
Right. And fifty-five, like you said, fifty-five thousand, that's alarming to me. I was shocked when I saw that number. I'm like, wow, people just really buzzed through there. And, but you can just sit there when you're going your little slow self through there and you can see people on their phone and they're buzzing right by you, you just want to yell at them. But I can't control what other people do. And slow everybody down behind me. That's what I do. So, yeah, I think a letter would be great.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, thanks, Chad. I have a few thoughts on this. I do a lot of driving and I've thought about this a lot. There's really, so the letter was to go to the county commission, correct?
Yeah.
Not the city of Bradenton?
Yeah, I would, because the city of Bradenton didn't change anything.
Yeah. I think there's.
And from what I, what I understand, I, I don't know if the city of Bradenton is doing it on just the morning and afternoon hours or if they're, I don't think there's this full time. I'm not.
There, from what I understand, and this is part of the confusion for drivers, this is totally out of our purview.
No, I agree.
To some degree, but, but I'm glad you brought this up because it, I think we do need to address this as a community. But what's confusing is that the county commission was on one schedule and the city of Bradenton was on a completely different schedule for these tickets. So I think that's part of the reason some people were emailing county commissioners, because they got a ticket in the city of Bradenton, didn't understand, you know, whatever the case may be. But if the, if the letter is to, to be addressed to the county, I agree with a lot of what everybody has already said up here. But I think we want to be specific and say, we, I think a point that needs to be drilled home is that we are talking about people who are going eleven or more miles per hour over the speed limit. And in the county's case, the county, when they started the program, they were only doing either an hour or a half hour. I'm sorry, I don't know exactly. But they were only doing arrival and dismissal. They were doing tickets. Whereas the city of Bradenton is, is, was and is still doing from the start of school to the end of the school day. So I don't believe, I don't believe that late at night or weekends were a problem. I don't think so. And to Mrs. Spray's point, if they were, they could be easily knocked out because there's a timestamp and a date stamp. But that, to me, is the crucial point here, is that this is not arbitrary. It's, it's eleven miles per hour over the speed limit or more. It's at arrival and dismissal, which I think is very fair, because what's unfair, and Chad, you hit on this, what is unfair, I believe, is that the thing about a school zone, when you drive into a school zone, you see a yellow light flashing. So you get the indication just out of habit, if you've been driving long enough, okay, I got to slow down. And I've done it myself and I've been sitting there waiting for the mail for my ticket to come. And it hasn't happened yet. But, but I don't see the yellow light, so I just keep driving at whatever the normal posted speed limit is. Or, you know, close to it anyway. I'm not going ten or eleven miles an hour over. And so I, I would just like us to see, I think it's really fair to motorists because of that, they're giving you ten miles an hour of leeway if you're speeding. And then the, that, that function of the lights. So, but maybe that doesn't need to be included because they were already doing that already. But yeah, but, you know, it's certainly worth a shot.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, it may not do anything.
Yeah, maybe they'll, maybe they'll take our input into account.
Yeah.
Might change a couple minds.
Yeah, okay.
But I think the idea for dedicating these funds to, you know, crossing guards, traffic related, is a really good solution.
We just say morning, raining out and there are crawling kids, you know. Ms. Taylor?
I don't know, Mr. Kennedy said if the lights are on, I think it's fair game if they're off.
Right.
I'm not a big fan of a lot more surveillance and cameras all around and watching us again with the government, but you weigh that against the safety of the kids in the school zone. If we have fifty-five thousand people that are blowing through our school zones more than ten miles an hour over the speed limit, probably need to do something about that. But I would be in favor of just language that says when the lights are on, it's fair, it's fair game. How you officially word fair game. When the lights are on, it's fair game. But other than that, I think then just regular, normal law enforcement ought to be
Right.
in place. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Legal, anything?
Yeah.
I just want to ask, are you, are we going to give you a responsible?
I will write it up and then send it, and then send it to the clerk and send it to Ms. Cox, then she can give it to you guys? If you guys are like, yes, sounds good, no, whatever. I don't have any, I don't really care about the language other than saying we support having them during school hours, right? Like if we want to tweak stuff.
Drop off pickup.
And obviously, Mr. Die will include you as well to make sure, you know, legally it looks great.
I, I don't know about school hours. I would say drop off, pickup. Because if you're saying school hour, school hours is.
No, I meant, I meant like the school zone hours of
Right.
Arriving and like.
Arrival and dismissal. Okay, same, same, same language.
So I'm pretty sure the signs say like seven forty-five, eight forty-fives, two thirty, three thirty, yeah.
But then, but then if you're in the city of Bradenton, they say, some of them, it's really strange because they haven't updated some of the school zone signage to match the policy when it was in effect. So some of them, some of them, even in the city of Bradenton, still say, for example, seven thirty to eight thirty. But then between eight thirty and two o'clock, you could still, two P M., you could still get a ticket without the yellow light off. But anyway, yeah, it's just, we got two municipalities trying to manage the same program.
Is, does Palmetto participate as well?
Palmetto is not, I do not believe was participating this at all.
Okay, I was just wondering.
City of Palmetto.
Can we discuss this over email? I mean, you were talking about us all making comments over email because of the sunshine issues.
Well, we can't, but we can communicate with Laura.
Yeah, I understand, but we can't like go back and, I like this language, no.
Oh, no, yeah, no, I would just go back to Laura with that, yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
All right. So we'll get to work on that. Do you want to, you want to do a motion? Do we need a motion on that?
I think the board should authorize the chair to.
To do it? Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion, authorize the chair to construct a letter to go to the board of county commissioners in regards to the school. of county commissioners in regards to the school safety zones and the availability of, of doing tickets and monitoring the speeding, speed zone.
And I'll second it.
Beat me to it.
We'll just do it verbally. Oh, you got it?
She's got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's ready to go, and Greenwiches, let's go ahead and vote.
I did it.
Oh, Felton. And that passes five to zero. All right, items number seventeen, one and two, just our normal information only, financial statements for charter schools, et cetera. Some updates, instructional update. Mr. Jensen?
Good evening. I think our wonderful curriculum team did an amazing instructional update on our STEM programming earlier this evening, so thank you again to that incredible team. I just have a few more updates. First of all, this is the last school board meeting before spring testing begins. We actually have the state writing assessment beginning April first, and then FAST and other state assessments will begin in May. School test coordinators and testing APs have all been trained by the district assessment staff, and they're working on spring testing plans and training their school staff on the spring administrative, administration procedures. I also want to thank our wonderful E S E department, because our twenty-twenty-five E S E agency fair was a huge success. We had a pre-session for parents held prior to the event, where we had about thirty parents learning about some comprehensive E S E issues, and then more than two hundred families came to the event and connected to more than forty-five community-based partners to support students. The feedback was that the event was a great symbol of the bringing of all the community offers to support our exceptional education students, and a special thanks to Jody O'Meara for leading the committee's work in organizing the event. I really enjoyed the opportunity to be with many of you board members at the Books for Kids luncheon on March sixth. As you know, Books for Kids is an amazing organization through the Lakewood Ranch Rotary, led by Ted Lindenberg. This initiative connects our Title I elementary school students with caring adult mentors who regularly read to them and give them books to take home, and as you know, it's just a wonderful program. I want to wish our students, families, teachers, support staff, and administrators a wonderful, restful spring break as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, operations?
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Wyson. A couple things with human resources. We haven't had any job fairs since we met last. However, we do have at least one exciting fair coming up. It's the Pathways to Teaching, and that's an alternative pathway to teaching. Individuals that have a four-year college degree can get credentialed to teach in our classrooms, and it's rather quick as well. So we've got a meeting coming up on the twenty-fifth. That is actually our, our second meeting. The first meeting was very positive. We had a little bit over fifty attendees that were interested in looking at this alternative route to be in the classroom. So that's upcoming on the twenty-fifth. We're expecting actually some more participants based on the feedback that we've been receiving. From the operational side, we do have an upcoming job fair on March twenty-seventh, and that will be at the Wakeland Center, and that'll be from nine A M. to twelve till noon as well. So we've got those two items going. Food and nutrition services, all secondary schools will be serving whittled bowls at a limited time offer beginning on March twenty-eighth. These ramen bowls are the hottest new item in school nutrition nationwide, so we're jumping on the bandwagon. Students will have a choice of either kankutsu, which I guess is pork, or Thai curry broth. In addition to the whole grain noodles and broth, the bowls will also include turkey, some eggs, carrots, and scallions. The most successful limited time offer will be open for consideration for next year's menu. So that's what food services has going on right now. Quick update on I T., they, the site support services, they've set up and delivered eight thousand five hundred and thirty-four student Chromebook devices so far this year. They're preparing to receive another six thousand, and that's going to be the initial phase one of our refresh upcoming this summer, so we're getting prepared for that. We've completed teacher laptop refresh across twenty schools, and we've delivered one thousand and fifty-four laptops to the teachers as well. Promethean interaction boards installed at Lakewood Ranch High School, Palmetto High in Southeast, totaling three hundred plus classroom panels at this point, so that program's going on. And finally, Braden River High School, Lakewood Ranch High School, and Palmetto High School gymnasiums, we're working on their audio upgrades and completed by the end of this school year, so we're doing that as well. On the consent agenda, you approved the purchase contract for Site AAA, which is an exciting one, because it's right at forty acres, so it gives us a lot of flexibility that we could actually do a K eight out there as well, and that's located on the north side of the, of the, of the county as well. So we're excited, and thank you for supporting that. And I wish everyone a happy and safe spring break as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Legal?
Just a reminder on your workshop Friday, Patty Petrough will be covering that.
Awesome. Thanks. Sue Virginia?
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda contained nineteen items, routine business so that we can continue the operation of the district. So board members, thank you for your research, and to all the staff who put those items together. Mr. Rinaldi shared about the purchase agreement for real estate, so that, that's a good step forward for us. Two other items of note tonight, you approved the promotion of Lisa Lyon, currently interim Director of Student Services, and she is being promoted to full Director of Student Services, so that we have clear leadership of that department going into budget planning for next year. So congratulations to Ms. Lyon. Also, tonight you approved an out-of-state trip for the Palmetto High School J R O T C. They are headed to the Cherry Blossom ten miler in Washington, D.C. April fifth through the eighth. The cherry blossom part sounds great, the ten miler, not for me. That is a, that is a replacement trip from an, an earlier event that they were approved to attend in the fall, and had to be canceled because of storms. So we're excited for those cadets. Since our last board meeting, just a couple of events that I'd like to highlight. On Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, I held what is now our second annual student leadership forum. Was excited to work with forty-eight of our graduating seniors, who are leaders in various aspects of their campuses. We have many pages of notes from those seniors, and board members were cataloging, cataloging all of that. And then we'll put up the artifacts in a conference room, and I'll let you know where that is, so that you can go by and read everything that our seniors had to say. And that was a, just a tremendous day, definitely one of my favorites every year. Last week, Ms. Sellers as CFO, and Ms. Miley as Director of Finance, and I traveled to New York City for the offering of our certificates of participation, so that we can build Ry Ranch Elementary and the elementary school in Artisan Lakes. We had a very successful offering. We are fully subscribed, so we have all of the funding that we needed. We actually had bids and offers at three and a half times what we needed, which resulted in negotiation of some lower yields, and therefore savings to taxpayers in Manatee County. So board members, we'll get you all those details once everything is finalized, including the amount of money saved. Last Friday, I hosted a breakfast for a very special group of employees, and that's the members of our crisis team. These are our school social workers and our school psychologists, who step up and volunteer their time to deploy to a campus whenever there is a tragic event in the community that impacts students or faculty members. This is an incredibly talented, strong, resilient group of professionals who take care of our students, both in, both in our district-operated schools, and we extend that service to our charter schools as well. And they are a remarkable group of people. And again, we, we had that breakfast on a Friday. They did have to deploy to a school the day before that, which was, again, just a reminder of the work they do. So thank you to all of our, our social workers and psychologists who take on that responsibility. And then finally, last Friday night, I had the absolute honor of speaking to our cadets at the J R O T C Military Ball. You know, Mr. Tatum was in attendance at a favorite event of his each year. And just in getting to meet and talk with some of our, our cadets, I am so optimistic about the future of our, of our community and our country, knowing that we're, we're preparing a great future group of leaders for our community. So really, really exciting. Also enjoyed two of our half-day school visits, one to Lee Middle School with the chairman, and the other to Willis Elementary with Mr. Tatum. Really focused instruction happening right now in our schools. Our teachers and principals know that it is crunch time, and they are really, really focused on daily reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and really seeing some tremendous artifacts of, you know, student work and learning in our classrooms. Finally, board members, a couple of items related to board business. Enjoyed meeting with you for the Florida School Boards Association training. We do have, I think, some work to finish up with that, so I'll add that to the workshop log. And again, if in the future, board members, you want to move forward with the full master board training, just let me know, and I will get that scheduled. The rezoning process is continuing. Four of the five public meetings have been completed. The last one is tomorrow night. Mr. Chapman has taken on the emcee responsibilities for those meetings. I did drop in at the Lakewood Ranch meeting last night, and he kicked the meeting off by saying, we're going to make this process as fun as possible. And I thought that was a, an interesting statement, but he definitely does a great job working through all of that data. And again, on Friday, at our workshop, we'll provide you with a summary of those meetings, including some of the questions that are being asked, and we don't have all of the answers yet, but it's really valuable this early on to have questions from the public and public input. It's helping us to frame our thinking as we get ready to go into map drawing mode. And of course, board members, on Friday, we've set aside considerable time so that you can have some conversation related to any guidance you want us to think about as we start drawing maps. There were some follow-up items from the February fourteenth workshop, as well as some topics that you all wanted to discuss, so we've got a framework for that to happen, and we look forward to your comments. We'll take all of that with us as we recharge over spring break, and then return and really get into the heart of the staff work related to rezoning, so that we can produce those draft maps for your feedback and the community's input. Wish you all a happy spring break next week, and to all of our students and families as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. James, do you have a question?
I was just curious, from the, from the investment, the bonding visit, what was the, what was the total amount approximately, and what was the interest rate we were able to obtain?
Well, it's, the, the grand total offering's just about a hundred and forty million, Sellers, a little higher?
A hundred and fifty-one is the whole amount. The par was one thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five million, so that difference was the premium, but we'll be able to be receiving from that a hundred and fifty-one million to pay for cost of issuance, and then a hundred and fifty million for the construction.
Maybe, I'm not asking the right question, but the, the interest rate that we owe on, on that borrowed money?
Uh, hmm, it's somewhere between three and five. I can't remember which, which number it is.
Maybe.
I don't have any of those copies with me here. And it, it was a four million savings, because we had so many orders on those.
Right.
Because it was supposed to be a hundred and thirty-nine par, and it ended up being a hundred and thirty-five par.
Congratulations. Would you just please send me that interest rate when you, would you please?
I'll find it, yeah.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, board comments. Kennedy, Tatum, Felton, Spray, myself. Ms. Kennedy?
All right, thanks. I'll be real quick. I just have a couple things for, it's kind of a hybrid way of doing this. I'm going to do a future agenda request during my board comments. But first, I want to thank everybody who came out for public comment tonight, and our, the Boys and Girls presentation. I was really moved by Taylor's speech. What an impressive young lady, to talk about what she has come through to come to be Youth of the Year. That was really amazing. But first, we had a specific request during public comment, which was a, the board to consider on April eighth, the question regarding the sharing of half-cent revenue with the charters. I think to Attorney Dye's point, nothing that was said during public comment is untrue, and nothing that Attorney Dye said was untrue. I think this is just a matter for the board to make a decision. It's not something we have to do, but to me, it's a matter of equity and fairness. And if, if the board supports me on this, if we could have an agenda item on the eighth to just up or down, so the charters have an answer and can move on either way, and they can start planning either way. Also, for a future agenda, maybe, and this is around rezoning, but we all received, over the past week or so, at least two that I can think of, maybe three, emails from teachers in the district who are running into obstacles getting their own child enrolled at the school at which they teach. And so maybe at the board level, we can create a policy for our staff members, that if you work at a location, that would automatically get your child to the same place. I think that would just, that would be a benefit to our, to our employees.
I was going to bring something like that up Friday.
Perfect. Okay, we can start there.
It's the work, it's the rezoning.
Okay.
Discussion.
We can start there. Thank, I'll save it for that.
Yeah.
And then finally, you know, we had a conversation during our board training, during that discussion near the end, and I was talking about how I have all these ideas, some of them are crazy, some of them are terrible. Some of them I think are good, and I would like the board to, to consider, and so instead of worrying about all nine of them, I figured I would focus on one, and that is the workforce housing project, that Heather and I were not here for that workshop, because it was last May, but the three of you have been through the presentation. Nothing really has changed, but the project has just kind of stalled, because the superintendent administration need direction on which way to go. And so I did go back and watch that workshop. Everybody was very supportive of it, for obvious reasons, but everybody involved is just waiting for an answer on which way do we go. So if we could find a way to get that on our workshop queue, or bump it up the queue with the support of you all, so if that's something you would support, if you could talk to the superintendent in your briefing about, like, hey, let's get the, let's get the ball rolling on the workforce housing. We've got a, we've got a site. Options were presented. We basically just need to choose an option, which way do we want to go.
Sure.
So, so that's it for me.
Yeah, and I'll, just to comment on that, I know that we definitely put that on hold as we're moving to a new board, because of, you know, we felt, at least legal, it also felt like, you know, Mr. Dye felt like, hey, we're going to put this on a new board, and what if they didn't even, you know, want it?
Yeah.
Like, so they didn't even know anything about it. So I agree, we need to put that back on.
Okay, great.
Ms. Tatum?
Good evening. So for safety, real quick, temperatures are getting back up in the eighties, so put your sunscreen on, cover yourself up, and stay hydrated, because summer's coming quickly, right? So remember that. Don't want to go see the dermatologist and, and give you bad news, right? So it's, which I've had happen, right? And needles and razors come out, and it's not fun.
I had that, I had that done yesterday.
Yes, exactly. So good. All right, great. So that's that, and then.
TMI.
That's right. And then, kind of what I said earlier with the people up here with the STEM stuff, but the more I'm around the school system and watch the events that we have, it's really a mission-oriented type of organization. Mr. Jensen, I had to talk about this, you know, in the military, you see people, we say it's twenty-four seven, nights, weekends, holidays, and, you know, you see all these school board employees working on Saturdays, working in the evenings, at all these evening events and stuff. I'm just becoming more and more impressed with their dedication to the school system. You know, we have probably sixty-two hundred employees or whatever, and I'm sure there are some rotten apples out there, but. are some rotten apples out there, but there are apparently some really good ones and I'm just more and more impressed. Actually went to the, I stopped in at the drill team competition at Southeast this weekend and then, you know, the, who, who replaced Jeremy Bowman? What's his name?
Oh, Ricardo.
Ricardo. He was doing a great job, another great event, you know, kids laughing, people screaming and all that kind of stuff. And again, and they were there from like, I don't know, eight in the morning until eight at night or something like that. So, anyway, that's all on that. Just, you know, I'm impressed with, it's not a nine-to-five job, certainly. And then finally, I sent, I'd actually, we've all gotten these emails about the issue you were talking about, Mr. Kennedy, the tax money for the charter schools. And so, actually did a little legal research because I get to play lawyer, even though I watch a lot of Law and Order, you know? And I sent it to...
Or suits?
To Laura Cox and some other people. I assume that it's okay if they would like to get that, to forward that information to the other board members.
Yeah.
It's not a sunshine issue. It just shows, it, it shows the original proclamation that was done or whatever we call that thing decree. You can read that verbiage. There's a couple of websites to go to. Talks about PICO money. By the way, this year, the charter school's got six-point-two million dollars in PICO money. That's something that we need to be aware of. It doesn't make up for the total amount that they might be getting from the, from the sales tax, but they are getting money that we're not getting. It's a very complicated issue, you know? But if you'd like to get that, it's helpful if you want to respond to constituents, if you read through that, I think it will summarize some things for you very well and be helpful to get that information instead of having to do it yourself. And I would be in favor of talking about it at least and seeing, and putting it to bed.
Right, thank you.
The question is, do we want to do it at a board meeting or do we want to do it at a workshop? If we do it at a board meeting, then, but if we want to get it done, I don't know. I guess that's up to you and Dr. Wyson with it. Yeah. But that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. or Ms. Felton?
Just really quick on that topic, I would prefer to have a workshop on it first so that we can talk about it, see how much funds go where and, and a bit more background. I have minimal background on it, so I'm going to have to go back and do some research on it because these all just started flooding in this week and I haven't had time. So, I would appreciate it in a workshop form before we go to voting on anything. Again, thank you to everybody from the STEM team who came out and spoke. It was wonderful presentation. I love seeing what our kids are up to. And just a quick recap, and my, my, what I've been up to. I have been able to visit Johnson K-12 as we have K-12s coming in, or K-12s, pardon me, K-8s. I don't know where my brain is right this second. K-8s, I must be tired. Daily savings is a mess. So, I wanted to go visit Johnson. They've been doing it the longest. My youngest child was, who's now twenty, was in sixth, eighth grade when they started bringing in the, the younger kids at Johnson. So, they've been doing it a while. They know what they're doing and they've got it down. And so, with the, the new, new ones coming in, I wanted to see how they run things and how that flows together, having the littles all the way up with the, the middle schoolers. It was a great visit. Boy, they've got that down to a science of kids changing classes without coming across smaller kids and, and it's, it's a well-oiled machine over there. I also was able to visit Lincoln Middle School yesterday and got to see the kids in their medical program that they've got with all of their, their dummies, which are, some of them are kind of creepy. But, you know, they're so excited to be there and to be a part of it. And the staff there, I, I actually know several of them from various places I've worked and they're, they're so dedicated and it was really nice, it was a really nice visit to visit over there because I haven't gotten to visit that school before. On Saturday, I was judging chili in the Parish Chili Cook-Off as, as I was asked as a, as a elected official to come and judge chili. So, some of them were fabulous. Oh, my gosh, they were so good.
How many, how many entries?
Twenty-four entries.
I thought chili.
I only had twelve.
Yeah, okay.
They did break it up between the five judges, so we each got, you know, twelve, which was good because after the twelve and then you had the four that were like the top four, and then after the runoff of the, I couldn't eat another thing for the rest of the day. And that was it, starting at ten o'clock in the morning. So, I, I was done until probably like eight o'clock at night. I'm like, okay, now I need a snack. But it was great. It was a great event. MTC and Southeast High School were both there, doing a phenomenal job and, you know, and, and the kids are always so enthusiastic to be out there. I know Chef Allen from Southeast very well and she runs a tight ship, but boy, those kids can cook. So, it was really a wonderful, a wonderful event and to be able to, to get our kids out there to showcase the culinary program there at Southeast is, and the way they can transfer right into MTC and go culinary as well. And then go right into the, to the working world is, it's a wonderful thing. I was also at the Military Ball. It was my first one, had a great time. It's, it's great to see the kids when they get all dressed up and how they carry themselves and when they're in uniform as well. And it was, it was a beautiful event and I'm, I'm very excited to go again next year. I have my, my future agenda. I am going up on Monday, so I will be all of, all of spring break, I'll be in Tallahassee because I have new board workshops the first couple of days. So, I've never been to Tallahassee, this will be an adventure, and walking around on all that traffic, so, so wish me well on that, but I will see the rest of you when you get up there for the days, the, the days of the Capitol. And as I've said, I've got some meetings set up as well. So, I'm looking forward to that and I hope everyone has a wonderful break and staff people who are in the room, please don't work over spring break. Yeah, I'm getting, you know, vague looks over there of, yeah, right.
Mission first.
But please don't work over spring break. Take a day or two or some, three for yourself and we appreciate everything you do and you deserve the rest. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Spray?
Okay. To all the public comment, I too would like to have a workshop on that, so I'm in line with at least, and I talked to Mr. Dy, I'd like to see the ballot language when that was out in twenty-sixteen or whatever.
That's what I think.
They're going to pull all that, right? Okay.
Yeah. Actually, I have a copy of it right here too, but...
All right, I didn't pull any of that. I've had a pretty busy week, last week and weekend, so. And I won't go into all that, but it's tennis season. I have been able to get out and see some matches. I saw Braden River and Parish Community, I think, day before. My week is so messed up, like can you remember when I was out there? So, that's kind of nice. I'm planning to go to some more matches or practice tomorrow. I'm planning to go to Southeast for their practice. And then, and too, Dr. Wyson mentioned it, I had on here, the rezoning meeting for South, it will be at Southeast tomorrow at six-thirty if the community's wondering about that whole process. I'm really sorry I missed the JROTC. I always put that on my calendar. It wasn't a good night for me, but it was, I'm sure, for everyone that was there. Boys and Girls Club, that was the third time I heard Ms. Taylor speak and it moves you every time you hear it, doesn't matter. When I was judging that, that Youth of the Year and then at the presentation where they got the award and who won, they were incredible. You could just tell they were almost, it was almost torture because they had to eat dinner and do all of this stuff before they knew if they won, which one won. So, it was almost torture for them, I'm sure. So, it was a long night, but it was very well done. I will say, they did a great job. The Boys and Girls Club did a great job through that whole process and that dinner was fantastic. And then, and the peer, the peer actually hosted them as a sponsor. So, it wasn't anything out of Boys and Girls Club budget, so that was a really, I was really nice to hear that. And then the Chili Cook-Off, I had planned on going, didn't make it, so I'm glad somebody went for the district anyway, so. I, I've been there for that and that tasting, oh, yeah. And Southeast does do a good job cooking and, I don't know, that team could probably start doing some catering there at Dr. Wyson. Yeah. For some events around here, I think they would be, they do a great job. They've done, I think, I think I was at an event at the Convention Center where they catered and it was fabulous. It was just fabulous and it was a big group. I have to go back in history and find out who did that, but I'm almost sure it was Southeast that catered up. So, anyway, that's about all I got and it was short but long.
Great, thank you. I'll just reiterate a couple of things. Taylor and, and we had a phenomenal speech for the Boys and Girls Club year, the award for the year and she, she, that was a phenomenal speech. And what Boys and Girls Club do for our kids is, is great. I do want to give some recognition. Omar Edwards and Doug Wagner won Pac Glass Leadership Award with the Mantique, the Tiger Bay. Couple of weeks ago, I believe it was, couldn't make it to the, to the event because of a previous schedule, but Coach Shannon as well, Coach Eddie Shannon was, was, I know you made the event.
Yeah.
Was awarded a, a Leadership Award too and, and those are, obviously Omar and Doug have been in the district for a long time and obviously Coach Shannon is a hundred and three, I think we just posted.
Yep.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So, yeah, yeah, we wounded them. I, yeah, if you've never experienced it, I'm sorry, but it's something special. So, just kudos to them, all their hard work they do for the district, being rewarded and being recognized by Tiger Bay. Leave visit was great, the middle school visit was great with superintendent, really good conversation about just middle school and the environment and how do we, you know, just all the things that happened in middle school as, as you as a kid, you know what I mean? And what are they going through and how do we, how do we manage that? How do we do some things? And I will say, walking through classrooms and, Mr. Nold, you mentioned it, the Prometheus boards and watching, watching the teachers be able to maneuver and change from, from subject to subject, paper to pa, etc. Gone are the days of the Elmo and having to make sure it's zoomed in or the clear, you know, I think I go back to Ms. Budridge in Algebra II, as you're writing on the, the plastic sheets, you know, the projector things. I mean, yeah, now you can fluently move.
Transparencies.
Transparencies. Now you can fluently move through things and, and at, at the end of the day, I, I think some of the technique and some of the, the learning may stay the same, but we've got to adapt with what our kids, who our kids are. And our kids don't see, you know, transparencies on a projector, like that's not what they look at, right? They look at iPads, they look at computers, they see tabs, you're hitting tabs, you're going through, and, and so it's just really great to see, number one, that the district, this is years ago, invested in those. And then also seeing the teachers, going through the visits and seeing the teachers use it, I, it, it's awesome. It, it definitely brings you back to the days where you had to, you know, get that Elmo and zoom in and all that kind of craziness. But the leave visit was great. Senior Forum, Dr. Wyson, you spoke about that and I think you started that when you came, you know, last year. So, this is the second one. My daughter was picked as a representative from, from Manatee with a couple of her friends and stuff. She raved about it. Like at first, it was kind of like, oh, I don't really know what to expect and then came home and said, you know, how cool of an experience it was to see not only like the kids, everybody else who was around. And I think you did something at the beginning, like how many of you went to elementary school, middle school with someone else, you know, that's not at your high school? And the amount of people that raised their hands just because of, of some of that, whether, whether it be from, from the feeders or a choice or whatever, but she was really, really impressed with just the overall program. So, thank you very much. I got to come to lunch and, and host a table and talk. It got some really good feedback from students. You know, it's, it's, it's funny what, you know, we think, you know, we're up here and we make decisions, etc., but those seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids had ideas about things, especially with like safety and it's something that I would definitely, I've already talked to, like I said, Fiona McFarland and I will be talking to some, and, and just the reality of what we're doing with our corridor doors and shutting those and locking those and what happens if it's a fire alarm and you're out in the courtyard and you can't get back in and someone's playing, and this is a seventeen, eighteen-year-old student saying this that should have probably been talked about at a legislation level about what, all the what-ifs, you know? And, and so this is, so, I mean, watching this, I wanted to offer a job, we wanted to offer a job, but one of the students was phenomenal. The kid was great. But yeah, so just, I, I really think we, we, we're going to benefit that from a, a district standpoint and these students may not see the fruits of, of their own labor because it'll be changed when they're gone, but, but their, their siblings, etc., and friends hopefully will see the fruits of that, that labor. So, I really, really commend you for doing that. So, I think it's a great event. Lastly, spring break. I hope everybody has a spring, good spring break and especially to the staff, y'all work so hard. Thank you for tonight. Take some time off for sure. Go to Cabo or something, I don't know. Rinaldi will take you out on the boat. But I really appreciate it. To the, to the responses, I do believe, and we're going to discuss, you know, the, the taxes, I do believe that, that's a workshop item. I don't believe that, that that's going to be something that we got to learn and know the effects of and etc., so I want to make sure that that's a workshop item. But I do agree, it should be done. And I'll get writing on that, on that letter to the BOCC so they can have it as soon as possible if I get that to you all. Other than that, Friday workshop.
Nine fifty-five.
Nine fifty-five, special. Yeah. If we're still on for that, well, we'll know later that we, yeah.
Right, at this moment, we're on and if we don't end up having any business, I'll cancel that. We'll start at ten.
Perfect, perfect. All right, that's all we got. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate it. Y'all have a good evening. We are adjourned.